Now the whole.
That's where it should be she know the back deck.
Well, I'm actually out here because Clara is writing in a math AP exam right now, so. Here to undisturb her. So I'm out here till she's done and then I'll go in after. After all this has happened them.
You're a good mom.
You don't really want to hear children screaming in anxious anxiety for a council meeting, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Fair enough.
This is second level advanced calculus like she's an AP in the second level, so.
Where the cream every now and then.
Yeah. So we'll just put us down here quietly and you guys can admire my back deck.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Two minutes, everyone. Need to wait for Jackie, it looks like. I haven't started yet. David, I heard about your dogs.
Well, yeah. What can you say? I mean, we've a lot of us have been there.
Yeah, I know. I'm so very sorry. It's hard. I'll bring my golden doodle in and he can cheer you up.
Oh, good.
Was it? Was it both dogs, David? I'm just hearing what is now. Is it both dogs?
No, no. Well, I've still got Sophie. She's fine, but Allie, she had cancer removed from her leg about twenty months ago and. You know, for the longest time it never came back and then suddenly it cropped up in her liver and she just went within ten days.
Really? I'm sorry. I know how much you love those dogs.
Yeah.
Well, they were very, very lucky dogs. If I ever have to come back, I'm going to come back as one of your dogs.
Yeah, I spoiled him a lot, didn't I?
Yeah. So I guess that the time that they did have with you was I they're very well loved. So there's a lot of dogs that could only dream of having their lives that they did, but I'm really sorry for you.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Condolences, David.
Thank you.
And there's Jackie. So we can start. We're just waiting for you, Jackie.
I think I'm on time. I'm just on time. Sorry to hear about your loss, David. That's tough stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to call the meeting to order for Monday, June first, two thousand and twenty. We have full attendance at the beginning of the meeting. I need a member of council to make a motion to adopt the agenda. We are. Adding. Under emergent items, you all got the patio and retail space. Agenda reports, so that will be under emergent and then under council motions eleven point two. My potential motion on operational review, if we can waive the. Notice of motion time period. So that's eleven point two. So I need a notice of motion or sorry, and. A motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Council, go ahead.
That the June first, two thousand and twenty agenda be adopted as amended.
Right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you for that. Number three is a proclamation. I've got it in front of me and it's one that we've done in the past. It's Recreation and Parks Month. Interesting enough, though, the first whereas talks about all the stuff that we do offer assuming it's probably. Which we may or may not be doing this year, but I will read it in because no matter what, we want to recognize. What our staff does in during the month of June. So. Whereas the city of St. Albert provides many opportunities for individuals and families to lead an active and healthy lifestyle year round through registered and drop in programs. Spontaneous activities, recreation facilities, parks and green spaces. And whereas recreation promotes mental, physical and social health benefits for all ages. And whereas participating in recreational activities cultivate social interaction, cultural diversity and family unity. To build a strong connected community and whereas we invite residents and visitors to celebrate the summer by participating in the wide variety of recreational opportunities available throughout the city. Now therefore, on behalf of council, I Kathy Heron, Mayor of the City of St. Albert. In recognition of the benefits and values of recreation and parks to hereby proclaim the month of June two thousand and twenty as Recreation and Parks Month in St. Albert. So we will. Somehow get this over to the rec and department to thank them for what they're doing in June. Anything to add to that, anyone? Nope. All right, moving on. Presentations, delegations and announcements. We do have Ken Crutchfield. He's waiting in the lobby. So actually Cheryl or whoever's in ledge can maybe let him in. And then we have three registered speakers, but they're for the public hearing at five o'clock. And that is all that we have. So is Ken with us?
Yes. I'm on now.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Do you have the capacity for video, Ken?
Uh, yeah, you want to look at me? Okay.
This makes it a little bit more real.
Okay.
There you go.
All right.
How are you doing?
Uh, not bad. Different world.
Yeah, exactly. Well, thanks for joining us in this virtual format. So you you wanted to speak on the engine item eight point three, the public hearing process. And the Aaron Ridge North, as I communicated with you, we're probably going to postpone it. So I guess if you have any comments about the postponing it, that we could listen to. But the actual application will have to wait till the real public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I appreciate the heads up on. The potential postponement to the of the hearing. I might have one comment at at the end of this point around the special public hearing process, but that'll be about it.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, in preparing and I really appreciate, you know, council offering this opportunity for residents to go ahead and speak to matters still even with COVID and. Everything else in special distancing like but in the course of getting ready for the potential public hearing. This afternoon, I happened to read item eight point three special public hearing process and. I would just say that, you know, since my retirement, I've gotten involved in a lot of. These municipal type matters because it was an interest that I had, but when I was working in an executive position, I really didn't have the luxury of a lot of time and effort. That I could devote to it. So here I am right now and it was a learning curve, generally speaking. The whole public hearing process and and speaking the council can be confusing, complicated for the uninitiated and. It it isn't really readily accommodating to the public involvement. It can be intimidating. So I'm past the point of being intimidated. When I read the special public hearing process, I found it problematic in that the process specifically states written submissions received after. That time now, the the hearing process requires you submit written comments a week before the the actual hearing. It says. Submissions received after that time will not be included in the agenda package. Okay, I can live with that. Nor will they be forwarded to council implying you will never see them. Now, what gives me a lot of concern is that there's a fairly significant public hearing coming up with regards to Oakmont and I suspect. Based on the public meetings that took place with that, there's going to be a lot of comment from people that are either going to. Come to council or people will want to raise their issues with their counselor. So unless residents actually send a comment into the counselor or to the mayor and council. Council will be excluded from seeing these submissions that come in after the deadline. And I think at the very least council should hear a summary from the legislative council. On whether the submissions were received subsequent to the filing deadline for inclusion in the agenda package. And to provide some sort of a general summary of what those comments might be, whether they're for again, but get get some feedback. However, I find it's not acceptable that councils didn't denied knowing that the late submissions were made and the essence of those submissions. I have in the last decade had expressed concerns about the whole process of public interaction with council. I find that the the meeting agendas and pertinent materials are only posted the Friday before the Monday meeting. I know it's mind boggling for counselors to read some of these packages. Well, it's harder for me as a resident. There's also challenges in accessing staff to pursue clarification of material prior to the start of a council meeting. And getting background material to prepare for a submission can sometimes be made be made more challenging, special for public hearings. When background information doesn't become available until a Friday before the hearing, very typically. It used to be that you could find on the the planning, business and development site under planning initiatives, they would have packages of material. A case in point, today's public hearing are. By law thirty two, thirty three, thirty four did not appear there. I know it's an old package that goes back to December of last year, but. My whole point here is is that if you're going to be prepared, you should have all of that information available to you. Now, COVID nineteen has precipitated the special hearing process. It brings additional complications for public involvement. And there's increased challenges to interact with key staff in that preparation and on top of it, you don't have any access to city hall. You can't go up to the planning department. So the past requirements for written requirements, the past requirements for written submissions to be filed a week beforehand. Admittedly, that's in the public notices and everything, but. What's of concern to me here right now is what about those submissions that come in after that deadline date? At the very least, I think council should have the benefit of even a a verbal summary from the legislative officer and. Yeah, that's what I find problematic about the special public hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm actually quite positive that was going to be a question by. At least one member of council, if not all of us, including myself when I read that as well. I didn't understand that because. I I understand you have to have it in to get it in the package because ledge needs to put the package together, but currently we are emailed. Submissions generally by ledge or provided a written copy right at the moment of the public hearing. So yeah, I'm sure we'll be asking about that one piece. And the other part about background information being available on the Friday before the public hearing. It's actually available at the time of first reading, which is generally about three weeks before the public hearing. All the information is first reading.
Okay, well, I've gone back to the site a couple of times just to see if this bylaw thirty two, thirty three. It admittedly it happened back in December, but for this current public hearing, there isn't any information there on the planning initiative site. But it is, you are correct. It is in that. Website information on the agenda for today's meeting, but it showed up on Friday. But.
So it might be just a hard, an improvement in how we navigate the website because of. It, yeah, okay, we can take that under advisement. All right.
And.
Any other questions, counsel?
Okay.
A good point on that. I'm sure we we all caught it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, then we'll be probably discussing that. Fairly quickly because lots of the stuff ahead of its own consent. So just go over to the YouTube channel and you can watch our conversation.
To onto the YouTube or?
Yeah. Do you know how to access it?
I'll find out.
Yeah, go to our city website, very bottom of the page. It talks about our meeting and there's links to watch it live.
Okay.
Okay.
And will I be able to come back to this like at that public hearing? I don't know the suspension of the public hearing for thirty two, thirty three. I'd just like to see. Counsel interaction again. If there's an opportunity for comment, would I just sign in at that time or no?
Um, I'm going to ask that question to our ledge, Mr. LaFleur. If we actually do not cancel the public hearing. Can Mr. Crutchfield come in and speak to it at that time?
If council elects not to postpone the public hearing, if you want to forge ahead with it today, then yes, Mr. Crutchfield or anyone else. Could do that. We do usually ask people to. You know, email it in advance and we know who's there. We can give them a Zoom connection. In the case of Mr. Crutchfield, he's already got one. Okay, that shouldn't be a problem.
All right, we have your phone number and email address, so maybe we'll just get ahold of you, but I'm I'm. Pretty sure we're going to cancel it. That'd be my guess. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on. I'm going to business arising from the presentation, I think we'll wait till we get to eight point three on the agenda. Is that good? All right. So consent agenda. Just so you know, I have pulled eight point two off of consent. Which is the appointment to policing because of course we can't approve a motion with a blank in it. So that's pulled off. So can I have somebody make the motion for the other agenda items on consent? Go ahead, Council brought it. Thank you.
Okay, I moved that the recommendations in the following agenda reports be approved seven point one regular council minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. And eight point one lateral launch equipment for utilities.
All right. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Sir, I giggle every time I hear lateral launch, so. Hey, there you go, Mistress Goble. We'll get some lateral launch equipment. All right. Next is of course. I will read the motion on the lateral launch equipment. Okay, the council authorized the chief administrative officer to ward. To Donison and associates a contract for provisions of an IB AK lateral launch CCTV pre pipe inspection system. For a value of up to one hundred and thirty thousand as per approved project four one nine seven four two. Equipment replacement plan. All right, moving on. To appointment to the policing committee, Councilor Watkins, as our rep on the policing committee, can I have you make this motion? You will have to unmute yourself. Are you ready? We can't hear you, Gray. There you go.
Okay. Sorry, what's the name that goes in there again?
I just put it in the chat. Sorry, I thought you would need.
Yeah. Okay. That Todd Walsh be appointed as a public member of the St. Albert, City of St. Albert Police Committee.
There's a little bit more there.
Screen went blank again. That Todd Walsh be appointed as a public member of the City of St. Albert Policing Committee.
For a term ending.
Ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty one.
Thank you for that. Any comments on that?
No.
All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll just say thank you to Todd for doing an interview with us a couple of weeks ago, and I think you'll be a great addition. All those in favor? That's unanimous. All right, so I'm assuming ledge will get a letter out to Mr. Walsh for his appointment. All right, special hearing, special public hearing process, Mr. LaFleur.
I am here.
Do you have a presentation on this?
Oh, no, not beyond what was in the the council report.
Okay.
I should probably address one item that's already come up and.
Yeah.
In public presentation. So when we're in our normal in council chambers. Our practice is, as you as you're all aware, I think that if someone comes in with a late submission. It will go to council, but we also make copies and make it available to the public gallery because it's important to us to be sure that whatever council sees. Anyone who takes the time to show up for the public hearing, you should, they should be able to see it too. So when we're doing things virtually, you can see the problem that poses, right? If someone wants to make a late submission, and again, the closer it comes to the public hearing time, the more this is a problem. How do we get it to everybody who wants to show up for the public hearing? Because, you know, something that someone else submits in writing might affect. What someone says verbally to you. So it's not a huge problem. It's a bit awkward, but it's not a huge problem when we're in council chambers. When we're on a virtual platform, if we were to say, okay, we'll. We'll take late submissions. We won't put them in the council package, but we'll make sure counselors get them. Yes, then you've got them, but the the rest of the public doesn't. And that's the reason we thought, well, the the fairest thing to do would be to set an absolute date on which, you know, if you get your 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 written submission in. It'll go in the package, council and everyone else will see it. But beyond that, you won't. It won't. It won't be seen. It's the fairest way we could think of to do it and still make sure that the public, you know, everyone in the public who would who's interested enough to show up at the public hearing. Will know what you as council are seeing. So that's the thing. I'm not saying it's perfect.
Is there? Risk if council does see it, but the rest of the public doesn't have that opportunity?
Well, if every public hearing is different, the issues are different. Well, if every public hearing is different, the issues are different, the interested parties are different. Could there be a risk? I would imagine that if there happened to be a very, very well attended public hearing with a lot of public interest. And I'm not going to mention anyone that's coming up now, but if there were such a public hearing and if council were to get a whole lot of material. That members of the public didn't, I could see where that could be grist for the mill of someone who might want to challenge the result. Yes. This is a very difficult, it's a difficult thing to know what's the the fairest way to do. Our our thinking was at least make it consistent for everyone. And as Mr. Crutchfield said in his submission, and I'll emphasize this. These deadlines will be clearly advertised in the Gazette on the public website. There'll be no mystery about when the deadline is to get your written submission in.
Okay, one quick, and then I'll go to you, Council Jolly, after this. Mr. Crutchfield had the suggestion that we at least receive a verbal. Summary of any submissions received after the deadline, and that way if it's verbal to council, it would be verbal to the public. Could we do that?
We can do that, yes. I I don't, I don't especially like the idea of interpreting what people say, however, if it's. If it's a high level summer that basically says, you know, for example, twenty submissions received after the deadline. Four of them are generally neutral, you know, eight opposed, eight in favor, that sort of thing. Yes, I can certainly do that.
Council Jolly.
I think I think Mr. LaFleur kind of answered my question. I'm, I'm, I mean, we receive emails right up till the time of a public hearing, so. I don't have any problem with a verbal sub summary, so however, we need to change our motion. Okay, I'm not sure, Mr. LaFleur, if you can. Can I give us advice in terms of changing the motion so that will reflect that that we do get that summary?
Well, okay, I was not expecting, just give me a second here and I can come up with something. We want to take maybe a one, two minute motion recess or something. I'll put something in the chat.
Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't we get the questions out of the way before we before we start doing that? Go ahead, Council McCaugh.
Yeah, I guess my question was to Mr. LaFleur, but he he may be busy, so I'm not sure whether or not he can answer the question.
Go ahead.
Still here, I'm still here.
Okay, all right, sorry, I'll type away as you go through it. I guess my, I mean, we we are familiar with a number of different platforms, Zoom being one. Email obviously for some of our residents, but there are many, many residents that don't have access to email or very. You know, not confident using virtual platforms. Matter of fact, I don't think a lot of us are in some cases with the exception of one or two. Is there an opportunity particularly? Or some of the bigger ones that might be coming our way that we would have other ways or methods of resident. Submitting their their concerns outside of an email. It could even be a letter, but it could also, I mean, maybe. Some sort of a setup at City Hall where a resident could come in, tape a concern so that we would have access to it. Or is that just logistically just too challenging and outside of the scope of the regulations set down by the government?
So I, it would not be outside the scope of the regulation. That's a broadly worded regulation that gives us a fair bit of latitude. The principle is exactly as you've expressed it, counselor, to try to give as much scope for the public to have their input at public hearings as as possible. What we did look at that sort of thing. You know, logistically, there there are some difficulties, especially when you have to maintain distancing and sanitation. Like, where would a person do that taping? If they're, if you're talking about them doing a taping in advance on their own and submitting it to us. I I suppose that might be possible. I I don't know that our IT has looked at how they could integrate that. You know, let's say you've got twenty people wanting to take their own five minute submission. We'd have to somehow arrange to, you know. Present those during the meeting on the Zoom platform. And then, of course, there wouldn't be any interaction, right? You just hear them and there'd be no questioning or anything like that. So anything is possible. I I'm I'm open to suggestions if council would like to amend this, these recommendations. By the way, I think I've got how to handle the other one, so I'm just going, well, I'm listening, going to be typing it into the chat.
Multi multitasking, I guess, just to follow up in in the sense of that is, is I I my my question was broad and I'm just trying to. Not limit opportunities for our residents to provide feedback. You know, Counselor Jolly identified that we get some of our submissions is right up to the start of the public hearing. Some of us get it after, maybe there might be that that occasion. I'm just trying to make it somehow as open as we possibly can in these difficult circumstances. Realizing what the circumstances mean, so. I'm open to suggestions. I I thought maybe that what we could do is sort of set up something at City Hall where we would actually have. Set up where residents could come in, recognizing some of those challenges that I've already identified. So but I'm right now, that's, I'm not, I'm just open to ideas right now from both administration and other counselors.
Council McCaugh does say written submissions, doesn't say email submissions, so a letter would be completely acceptable as long as it's received in time. So that's good. Counselor Hanson had her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in terms of receiving. Public input by a deadline date so that it can be put into an agenda package, I think that is completely reasonable. Anybody. Who puts together administrative work understands that deadlines are important. Is it possible to have? A second email at hearings. At SaintAlbert.com that sort of points people in the direction of if you've missed the deadline. On the website, send your stuff here. It's not going to make, and then make it very clear, it will not be in the package. Counselors will receive this Monday morning.
Or even an automated response.
Or an automated response, exactly. You have missed the deadline for. For submitting. Your opinion, but you can send it here. Counselors will get it. There's just, there's a lot of people who will be new to the process each and every time something happens that they want to be part of a public hearing. That affects them, that's usually when they'll get involved. And so not everybody's a pro at this. So. I think it's really important just to say you've missed the deadline, but. Don't worry, council will receive this first business day, Monday morning. The only thing with this particular one coming up is that we start at nine AM on a Monday morning, so we would be scrambling to. Read what comes in, but you know, that is the problem with submitting late, and we are asking people under these circumstances to be organized.
Yeah. Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things that COVID has forced us to do is to introduce new technologies. Into the entire. Paradigm of how we do public hearings. I I don't think that. That we should lose sight of what is good now when we actually go back to meeting in person. And quite honestly, I I I like where Counselor McCaugh was going. Because if we set up a a process whereby people can come in and and present their. Petition in advance or their statements for the public hearing in advance, they can do it verbally. And it sort of takes the pressure off the time constraint where people have to come in if they want to speak directly to council. I just think that over this COVID, we've we've had to work with technology. Let's not lose the positive that's happened here, so. If Counsel McCaugh were to bring forward a motion, he certainly would have my support in that regard.
Any more questions? Sheena, go ahead.
Thanks. Are we in phase two or phase three in the recovery to reopen the council chambers? I would think it would be phase two, wouldn't it?
I think so, but I'll let Mr. Scobal answer that one. And then I'll go to Council Jolly.
So we're, you know, it's, it's, yeah, we're looking at a basically a reentry plan. Potentially in early July is the timing that we're looking at right now.
Okay, so if if the province were to open up, like I know they were saying that this potential could be before the nineteenth of June, so. Even if it opens up on the fifteenth of June, we're still not expecting to reopen council chambers for a couple more weeks. Is that correct?
The the, sorry, Mr. Scobal, the closing of City Hall was not provincially mandated, so we can open it whenever we want. It's it's not part of a phase. Is that right, Mistress Goble?
We're looking at opportunities to open it sooner than that, yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to think, because I know that there's the large public hearing upcoming on the twenty second, I think. And I'm just trying to see if what, if there's any, I know I asked before, but it was a couple of weeks ago. About the potential that council chambers might be open for the public hearing.
And but again, when we do reopen, of course, depending what, it it really comes down to what the public health orders are, which ones are still in effect, so. You know, City Hall may be open and and council may be meeting in chambers, but we may still very well have to limit it to. Less than fifty or two meter spacing, so you know, right now indoors is still less than fifteen, right? So whether it'll move up to fifty or some other number, but there'll probably still be spacing, so. We may be in chambers, but we may not be able to have a, still have a traditional council meeting with a traditional public hearing.
Yeah, there's seven of us plus staff, that's almost at fifteen right there. But I'm seeing Mr. LaFleur waving, and then Council Jolly, is this on the same topic? Okay, I'm going to go to Council, Mr. LaFleur, then I'll come to you, okay? And then we'll go back to Sheena for questions.
I just want to quickly supplement what Mr. Scobal said in terms of how council chambers might work, wh- when it's again open to the public. You may recall that very last meeting we had before council chambers were were shut down. We actually. Put some tape up and we made sure that we, you know, physical distancing up in the public gallery. When you did that, there were only seventeen chairs left available. That's, that's one of the complications. If we are going to have to keep the physical distancing measures in place for some time. You're not going to be able to admit a whole lot of people to the gallery.
Okay, so there's a potential we could open the council chambers, council, but not open to the public. Is what I'm hearing. And so as long as it closes, the public says in the motion, that's what we do.
Correct, and and again, it's not really about stage two or stage three, it's about which public health orders are in effect and how they've been amended. So again. You know, outdoors was recently amended and i- indoors is still fifteen, and whether it's amended or left the same, and you know. That, those will be the triggers as to what kind of meetings we have and how many people are permitted.
Is it okay if I ask one more question?
I'm just gonna go to Council Jolly, because she was waving her hand, I think, on this topic, and. Did you have something to add to it?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say that email that I sent last week from the town hall with. With Minister Medu and and Dr. Henshaw, that was one of the questions that was asked, so there's no. The province isn't telling councils what we have to do, just kind of exactly what Mr. Scobal and Mr. LaFleur explained, that it's kind of up to us. How how we structure ourselves within the context of the orders, and so I think that's in the email that I sent to council.
Thanks. Okay, another question, Council Hughes?
Yeah, so if we open up, because right now everybody's on Zoom. But if we were to go into council chambers and then have the public have to do it by Zoom, I'm. That's possible, right? Because I mean, you'd have one camera that currently be looking at council. Or we actually just all go on council and all do Zoom.
Yes, technically it's possible, I have to work it out with IT, but yes, if you have like a conference room or a system like we have in council. Would run very similar and then, but yeah, it would be through the Zoom platform with numbers of the public participating remotely via Zoom.
And we would be on Zoom as well, so we'd have basically, I'll be sitting in our chairs, but having, looking at our screens?
Yeah, but again, we'll have to sort out, I'm not sure if you can toggle between the pan view of the entire council and individual counselors. We'll have to sort that out with our technology group.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should continually assessing that as we move forward, and I know Kevin and I talk about this all the time. Because it's what, three weeks away to that public hearing, and you know how fast things are changing with the province. They, they're accelerating things and slowing things down, so. And when Counselor McCaugh and I were in council chambers for that one meeting. It's really difficult because of the echoing with everybody speaking. But your computers are all open on Zoom, so it was really difficult, so I don't know how we would overcome that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I think what I'm trying to figure it is just a predictability factor for residents, so that they have an idea of whether or not. They should expect Zoom no matter what, or if there could be a possibility that they could be inside the city hall, so. But you're telling, that's why I'm just, because it's only three weeks away, and people need to take time off of work or whatever else. Especially since we went all day, I just thought it'd be fair to residents. So in your estimation, does it look like I'm looking at Mr. Scobal? Because you can tell, obviously, I'm staring at the screen. In your estimation, I'm thinking that we're, we should be expecting Zoom for the twenty second is what I'm looking at.
I I think that would be the the prudent way to look at it at this point in view. I mean. Really, when when the province makes changes to the orders, they happen very fast. We don't have any advance notice and. At the end of the day, it's the the call of the chief medical officer when we do these sorts of things, so. But at this point, we're planning for Zoom for that.
In the event that something does change, just because things are happening, like ten years happen in twenty four hours these days. I just think that we really need to make sure that we communicate that to the public as quickly as possible, whether we're in council or not, just somehow get that out so people can plan their day around this.
Yeah, but I I again, it's, I think it's very fair to say that it will be in some form of Zoom because. You know, there's no indication at this time that the the spacing requirements, for example, will be reduced anytime soon.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, any more questions?
Mayor, I I did.
Go ahead, Council McCaugh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought, I thought I heard you say somebody else. I apologize. Did Mr. LaFleur put his motion up there?
Not yet, no.
You can expect it to come from Cheryl. I sent it to her by way of an email reply to her, so hopefully it'll be posted shortly here.
Okay, yeah, I guess my only other comment was, I just don't want to, I know we've talked Zoom Zoom all the time here, but. I just don't want to maybe lose an opportunity to do it, but I, I honestly don't know whether I have to craft a motion or, I mean, because I mean, I don't want to force. Through a motion, something that maybe logistically we just can't do because of orders or other challenges we have with our own IT. So and and so. I'm trying to say, is there an opportunity to look at other other platforms outside of just Zoom? If somebody wants to be able to present and I, and if they do, will they, will they not have the. Will their voices not be heard is is what my concern would be.
Mr. Fleur, were you waving your hand at that?
Yeah, I I was, I just, you have to bear in mind that there are advertising requirements for the public hearing. And when you start to advertise a public hearing, you've got to be very specific. Here's where it's going to be held, here's how it's going to be held. The first of those advertisements, as Cheryl can correct me if I'm wrong, the first of those advertisements for the June twenty second public hearing. I believe is actually this Wednesday, because remember the Gazette is no longer publishing on Saturdays. So to get the once per week in successive weeks, I think we have to do the first advertisement as early as this Wed- Wednesday, if not, certainly next Wednesday. And so, you know, you, we basically have to fish your cut bait now, right? We have to make a decision how we're going to handle that public hearing, because you can't go changing it after you've advertised it.
Fair enough, then. I mean, that answers my questions. I I so, okay, I I just think logistically it would be hard. I think as long, I just reading your paragraph, I I can, I think that captures what we could do and gives residents an alternative.
You know, I think our ledge officers are pretty accommodating. We know Cheryl is always talking to residents, and if there's either a written letter that we received by Canada Post or an email expressing. A way, we will, we'll make sure that we could do our best, make sure everyone has an opportunity, whether it's a pre-recorded on their cell phone or whatever. But we will, we will take submissions from anyone. Council Jolly.
Well, just kind of on that note, into what Counselor McCaugh and Broadhead were were talking about in terms of people being able to submit. Submissions in different formats. I mean, how, would there be any logistical issues of amending the number seven in the motions? Just to get rid of written, the first word, so submissions aren't restricted to any particular format. I think that that just seems like in the spirit of what what Council McCaugh you're trying to accomplish there.
Is it?
Well, either or, sorry, can I, just to, just to respond. I I guess a high level summary to counsel, this kind of implies that it would come later. My my comments would be that a resident could submit it at any time, up and up to and after in any format. That was kind of the thought I was going through, so. I think the number seven, the way it was drafted was to deal with some of the things that Mr. Crutchfield was concerned about with. That we weren't going to be able to get a a summary after we had, after the the deadline had ended, so. So, um, uh, and what I was just make, wanting to make sure was, is that we would be opening any type of platform, um, whether it be written, whether it be email, whether it be, YouTube video, whether it be, and, and, and so I don't know whether that would capture what I was trying to say there, Council Jolly.
I believe it kind of does when you take out the word written.
All right, well, okay, fair enough. I, my, my interpretation of that was, is that it would come afterwards, but, um,
Well, if you, if you look at what, what they want to add to the end, then the high level summaries there too.
Yeah, fair enough. Just that if, if a member of the public submitted a iPhone video of themselves in opposition or in support of a pu- a public hearing matter, would we be able to view that versus having administrations submit a high level summary of what we received? That's all. I don't want to-
Yeah, I think we're making this a little bit more difficult than it's-
Yeah, and, and, and that's, and that's why, I, logistically, I think I'm going to stay with Mr. LaFleur's comments that I think, in this case, it makes it difficult. But I would still encourage all residents to submit their feedback to all public hearings, no matter what format.
Yep. Okay. Who wants to volunteer to read this eight motion thing into the record with that? With, it won't be amendment, as it says in the chat. It'll be just, um, we'll take out normal day before to council and we'll substitute in this. Okay, because we don't have a motion on the Florida amendment, so if we just read it in correctly the first time, we're good to go. Who put up their hand? Council Jolly?
I talk faster than anyone else.
That's true, you do.
Okay, am I good to go?
Yeah.
Right, so that, "For so long as the council chamber remains closed to the public, to public access due to restrictions for the purpose of reducing the risk of COVID-19 transmission, public hearings will be conducted in compliance with Alberta Regulation 502020, Meeting Procedures COVID-9 Suppression Regulation in accordance with the following, following. One, the Zoom platform will be used to conduct public hearings and the proceedings will also be live streamed on YouTube, which will be accessible through the city website. Two, when a public hearing is scheduled to commence on a Monday at 5:00 PM, individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing must register to speak by email sent to the email address set out in the notice of public hearing, not later than 10:00 AM on the day of the public hearing. Three, when a public hearing is scheduled to commence on a Monday at a time earlier than 5:00 PM, individuals wishing to speak at the public hearing must register to speak by email sent to the email address set out in the notice of public hearing, not later than 12 o'clock noon on the preceding Friday. Four, individuals who are properly registered to speak at a public hearing will receive an email from Legislative Services on or before the day of the public hearing, including a link at which they may join the Zoom platform when the public hearing begins. Upon joining Zoom, an individual registered to speak will be placed into the Zoom waiting room and will be moved from the waiting room to the main Zoom platform when the chair calls on them to make their submission to council. Five, individuals who register to speak at public hea- at a public hearing will be placed on a list of speakers provided to the chair in order corresponding to the time their registration, registering email was received. After any submissions from administration and from the applicant, if any, have been heard, the chair will call upon registered speakers in the order their names appear on the list. Six, if more than 10 individuals are regist- registered to speak at a public hearing, administration will endeavor to send them an alert email as their time to, to speak approaches. But all registered speakers shall be responsible to monitor the progress of the public hearing on its electronic platform and be ready to make their submission when called upon by the chair, regardless of whether they received an alert email. Seven, um, written submissions to council for all public hearings, regardless of start time, must be received at the email address specified in the notice of public hearing by 12:00 noon on the Wednesday prior to the public hearing for inclusion in the agenda packages. Submissions received after that time, um, I don't know, will, um, I'm try, sorry, I'm trying to include this, this, uh, amending paragraph. Will be summarized by administration with a high level, uh, written summary to council and the content of any late submissions, including, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, at a minimum, the number of such submissions and the number of submissions expression, expressing support or opposition for the matter under consideration.
That might sound sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay, and eight, the prevent- provisions of the procedure bylaw with respect to public hearings will continue to apply to the extent possible, consistent with these special provisions for public hearings on the Zoom platform and consistent with the requirements of Alberta Regulation 502020.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any opening comments? Anyone else? No, I'll just, uh, thank Mr. LaFleur for making this really crystal clear to residents. And I think it should be noted that the province, uh, only required that we have written submissions. Council in St. Albert has gone a bit above and beyond by including, um, this Zoom platform to, to be able to do this. And, uh, I'll reiterate again that Ledge and myself will make it as easy and accessible as possible during this strange time to, to allow for public presentations. Um, and at the same time, I actually kind of almost think that the Zoom platform might allow for more public participation than we have seen in the past. Because in the past, you would have to take time off, sit in council for hours and, and wait your turn. But this, now you can just log in, say, your five minutes and, and be gone. So this might actually, um, be something we can consider after COVID. So, anything to close, Council Jolly? All right, call for the vote? That's unanimous. All right, moving on. We are on Ranger Road 260. Uh, and Donnie is there. Wow, you're fast. Thanks, Donnie. Do you have a bit of a presentation?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Donnie George, Director of Engineering. And I'm also joined by Jason Cassalt, Manager of Infrastructure, Planning and Asset Management, to answer any questions that you may have at the end. As a background, while administration was under the council direction AR 19491, provided on June, uh, January 20th, sorry, of this year to advance a negotiated conditional offer and financial options to acquire the lands necessary for a community M&amp;P site. Uh, within the Ranger 260 ASP, administration was further directed on March 23rd to prioritize accelerating the process of pre-design and detailed design for servicing the proposed land with the intention of having a shovel-ready project in anticipation of stimulus funds from higher levels of government amidst the economic crisis faced due to COVID-19. Accordingly, administration has been working collaboratively with ROHIT communities, the developers of Ranger 260 lands, in advancing the preliminary and detailed design of required servicing. As per the city's utility master plan, part of the servicing of community M&amp;P site and Ranger 260 ASP involves the construction of a 1,200-millimeter sanitary sewer trunk line, known as Sanitary Project 8, crossing private properties north of the CN Rail right-of-way, west of Reggibin Drive. As part of completing the design of Project 8, the cities are required to secure permanent land rights to place the sewer line along the private properties identified as utility right-of-ways, including additional temporary construction easements. Typically, the city would not be securing its land rights in this fashion by way of utility right-of-way, as the lands required to accommodate large-scale utility such as Sanitary Project 8 would be dedicated to the city as a public utility law during the normal process of subdivision. However, there is no time to wait for our traditional planning process to play out if we want to obtain a shovel-ready project as soon as possible. Based on preliminary discussion with the affected land owners, administration believes that a sum of $50,000 will be sufficient as compensation to secure legal rights needed to proceed with making this project shovel-ready as soon as possible. Therefore, administration is recommending that the CAO be authorized to enter into temporary working easements and utility right-of-way intended to remain on title in perpetuity in support of off-site levy sanitary project 8, described as North Interceptor Trunk Phase 2B, and that up to $50,000 be authorized to be drawn from the city's off-site levy recovery fund reserve to obtain the working easements and utility right-of-ways. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Okay, looking around, any questions? Uh, I have a quick one, and it might actually be for finance. Is there anyone from finance here today? I just, or maybe I'll just, I'll address it to, hi Diane, I'll just hit to Mr. Scobal, and if you have to jump in, then feel free. So, we are accelerating this servicing in order to, um, hopefully qualify for some stimulus funds for the province. And, but regardless, this was a project that we were going to be required to do in the land deal with ROHIT over the next two to three years anyway. So I'm wondering how we were, it's a 20-odd million total. How were we going to fund that? Was it going to be a borrowing bylaw?
Um, yes, it would very likely be a borrowing bylaw, however, with the, um, servicing of that debt to be coming from the off-site levy recovery fund.
Right.
So with no impact to taxes.
Okay, so, what, because as I was reading this, I, my question was, why don't we just get the borrowing bylaw now and, and take the $50,000 out of, like, just keep it all in one big package? So, uh, Kevin, this privacy fee, are we going to be, um, bringing forward a borrowing bylaw soon to, to get this done, regardless of whether we get the stimulus money or not?
Well, yes, we will. I mean, again, we're, we're still, uh, in negotiations with, with ROHIT about how this deal proceeds. But to get, to keep things move along for shovel-ready, this is kind of, I guess, an early, early payment. So, subject to the final negotiations with ROHIT, then we would kind of know where we stand, so to speak, bring that forward with a borrowing bylaw for council's approval at that time.
Okay, I guess my question is, I, I want to see this continue to be accelerated, regardless of the provincial stimulus, because we have to do it anyway. And we're spending all this time and money and work now to do it, so let's keep that going. So it was kind of, it's unrelated, I'm fine with the funding source now, so we'll take out a $20 million minus $5,000.
We remain on an accelerated schedule. And again, this is just something that's getting, getting easements now will help us to remain on that accelerated schedule.
Perfect. All right, good stuff. Uh, any questions, anyone? All right, anyone want to make the motion? Council Mackay?
Uh, that the CAO be authorized to enter into temporary working easements and the utility right-of-way intended to remain on title in perpetuity in support of off-site levy sanitary project 8, described as North Interceptor Trunk Phase 2B, that up to $50,000 be authorized to be drawn from the city's off-site levy recovery fund reserve to obtain the working easements and utility right-of-ways. I, I've got nothing to open.
All right, anyone else? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this, but, um, because we started down this road. But if there isn't the provincial stimulus, we really have to go back and think about whether or not we can actually put the extra tax increase burdens on residents right now. We haven't seen the full economic stim- um, impact of what COVID's done to the province or to our community. And so, this makes sense to start moving it forward to have these options. But at the same time, there's going to be, I think, a much, another discussion later on down the road about exactly how much we want to commit funding it right now. Because what we were thinking, we approved this in, I think it was January or November, I don't even remember anymore, because it was 10 years ago. When this was approved, we were not facing COVID and all of the consequences financially of COVID at that time, so. This makes sense to do right now to give options, but I know you said, Mayor, that you want to fast-track it regardless of what the province does. And, um, this would really be contingent for me about whether or not we have a motivation to move faster, because I don't really know if people can afford the tax increases for this otherwise.
Anyone else? Yeah, just, okay, go ahead, Council Hanson.
I just want to clarify, I thought that this was not going to have a tax increase impact because it would be their off-site leviable funds.
And it comes from our recovery reserve, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think it just means as long as we have enough in that reserve, right? And so we have to kind of, um, base our forecasting on speed of development in the entire city, to make sure that reserve has money, but you're right. And, and we would be required to do the servicing in order to get the land from ROHIT. So if, if we don't do it, we're going to lose the rec lands. That, you know, that's the other consideration. Who, Council Mackay, anything to close? You're muted.
There you go. Yeah, sorry, I apologize, I just hit the wrong buttons. Only thing to close is, is, um, I mean, in recognizing, um, Council Hughes' comments is, is that, I mean, typically, we wouldn't be securing our, uh, land rights in this situation for utility right-of-ways. We're in unusual times, uh, there is an opportunity to move forward. And so, um, you know, traditional planning processes are going to have to be, uh, moved aside, I guess, in this case, in order just to move forward as, as we've talked about. Recognizing that there's, I mean, we, we would have to have these anyways as part of our, our ongoing negotiations. So, um, this just moves it ahead a little quicker and doesn't necessarily commit us to anything in the future.
All right, call for the vote? That is unanimous. All right. Styrofoam. And Kate's here with us. How are you, Kate?
I'm great, thanks.
Good. Do you have a little bit of a presentation?
I don't really have any more to add, but what was in the agenda, agenda package. So, um, I think there is an alternative motion that's prepared as well to, for council to contemplate that's gone around. Um, and I'm just open to questions.
Go ahead, Council Mackay.
Just a couple of questions, just to get more clarification in the sense of this. Right now, how many municipalities in Edmonton metro region are using styrofoam recycling? Last, I think it was just us and Strathcona County? Is that, is that correct?
I have to get a tally, there's probably more than that now. I'd say we're probably at three or four locally. But it's, it's growing, um, and this is the only contractor that provides this service locally.
So the other municipalities are using this contractor?
They are, yeah.
So, um, in the background, are we, you identified a building structure cost of $15,000. Is that, um, at their request, or is that something that we've determined that we need to, uh, move into from a regular CCAN type of a thing?
Um, it's the different, additional storage totes that are required. So it's not a, um, it's not a building by any stretch. It's basically like a bin or an additional CCAN to support those services. So it's nothing that can't be moved around and repurposed if need be.
So, um, so it doesn't necessarily have to be the $15,000? This is just something we want, or is this something the contractor wants or has suggested?
It's required. So, uh, we have to keep the styrofoam extremely clean for it to be, um, recycled. Um, so that's part of the, um, increased costs are the contractors need to provide additional cleaning to the styrofoam when we receive it. So this is part of trying to mitigate ongoing increases in the future.
So are we, um, are we responsible for anything other than to actually have a storage for it? Do we, are we responsible for sorting it and making sure that it is clean? Or is that as part of the contract?
Um, the contractor does generally provide some cleaning for it. The more we can encourage our residents to bring their styrofoam clean and we are generally there helping them sort it. That keeps our costs down as far as, as low as possible. The more intermingling or the more, um, I guess contaminants that are in there is when we start to see additional costs on top of what we've put in the agenda report.
So, uh, the, the agenda report also talked about the actual amount that we've collected so far, so the volume. Is that volume, um, for that time period, is that what other municipalities are seeing? Or, or would you have that information? I mean, are we average, are we high? Um, I'm just trying to see if, how, how, uh, our residents have adopted the program.
Um, so I'd say there's pretty a high uptake in the program. We don't have the data from our adjacent municipalities in terms of how, um, what types of volumes they're receiving. Um, so we could ask around over the next month. It's really tough to say, because obviously we're seeing quite influx of everything at the Mike Mitchell Recycling Depot, because people are spending quite a bit of time cleaning out their houses and doing as much recycling. If you go, you can see quite a queue during the day. Strathcona is actually closed right now. So, um, like, they've closed down their recycling depot during COVID, whereas we've kept ours open and we're seeing a high influx of people. So it would be tough to, for us to project what we would see this time next year in a normal operating circumstance.
But, um, can you maybe comment on whether or not you believe the residents have, I mean, are they, um, are, has this obviously, um, become very popular in our community?
Um, relatively popular. We've collected 3,000 kilograms since January up until end of May. So that's quite a bit of recycling. But in terms of what percentage of people throughout the city that are using it, I don't know.
Yeah, and- Yeah. And do we, do we think that there are some of our recycling that actually comes from businesses, or is it mainly residents?
I'd say it's mostly residents. We have, because of COVID, we have quite a larger workforce supporting us at the recycling depot to support physical distancing, et cetera. So we do do probably a better job than we've historically done manning the gate and ensuring that it are, that it is our residents there. Like standard household residents that are there, just because we actually have the staff right now. Generally, we only have two people there at any given time on a normal operating period.
And last question, Madam Mayor, is the, is a contractor, then is that the only contractor that we're aware of in, in the, in our area?
That's correct.
Is there an opportunity, a business opportunity here?
I, it would be dependent on which direction you'd like to take your business.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to make questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Kate.
It'd been a great business line for a utility corporation.
Council Broadhead and then Council Watkins.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks, Council McKay. Only one further question. Three times the cost. Is, is there a processing issue driving up the cost, or is this the demand issue driving up the cause?
Uh, it's tough to say. They're claiming that it's additional processing that's required that they didn't originally project. And I think that they know that they have the ability to drive the cost because they're the only local provider.
Okay, fair enough. Well, I appreciate the idea that we actually allow styrofoam recycling. Irrespective of the cost, I'm going to swallow hard, but yeah, still think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Council Watkins.
If we end the program, then people just put it in their brown container? Is that what happens?
Yep, that would be correct.
Okay. And did we collect the 3,000 kilograms of it since May?
Uh, since January.
Yes, and what would the cost be to landfill that 3,000 kilograms?
It's tough to say because it's really light. So we pay our tipping fees based on the weight in our trucks. Um, so it would likely fill up people's bins quicker because of pure mass, but the actual, like pure volume, sorry. But the actual weight of styrofoam is relatively light, so it probably wouldn't have increased tipage fees at the, at the landfill substantially, just because it is such a light piece of material.
Yeah, no, but how much do we pay to tip a kilo, 100,000 kilograms of garbage?
Oh, what's tipage right now?
I'm saying the cost to just tip it 3,000 kilograms would be what?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know what the volume would be on that. Sorry, Council Watkins. I can get back to you and let you know what that cost would be. It would be relatively low, though.
Okay.
But you're right, Council Watkins, there is a, a cost to go into landfill. It's not free. Council Hughes, did you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So are we being charged by the kilogram or by the volume, or how do they determine the pricing?
Uh, so if you've ever been to the recycling depot and done and been involved in the styrofoam, there's these big white totes that get filled up with the recycle, with the styrofoam recycling, we pay by the tote. And how we've been doing it is, so it's more so volume. Not compacted volume, let's say. So there's lots of voids in those totes because of the, the shapes of styrofoam. Um, so we pay by the tote. Um, and they historically have just been providing us an eight hour service support in terms of actually processing it. They actually process it in their giant truck at the back of Jack Craft for a day. So you can smell the operations from Mileby. Because it's quite an operation when they come in. Um, so we pay by the tote, though, irrespective of how compressed that tote is.
Okay, so what I'm wondering, like, we have 3,300 kilogram, or yeah, kilograms of that's a lot, like a volume mount, that's a lot of volume of it. So when we first did our estimates and how much it was going to, it was going to cost, are we pretty much on track for what we were expecting it to be for resident uptake? Or how are we doing on that?
We were probably on track for January, February, we were receiving the consistent numbers and we saw substantial increase, obviously during COVID of people bringing in their materials. We hadn't projected for that prior to. But January, February, we were on track. The last couple of months, a little bit more, obviously. But the kind of eight hour fee that we're receiving for them from a costing perspective has still gone up three times, three times the dollar value, which is why we felt it was important to bring it back to you guys.
Okay. Well, sometimes if you're the only lemonade stand in town and you want lemonade, then right? Um, the other question, I know I'd, I'd sent council an alternate motion saying we keep it going and adjust the rates for 2021. And you had sent me an email saying just to get a stabilization reserve for this year. I'm wondering if, if I were to do my motion and just say to adjust the rates. I haven't said an obvious, I'm saying basically is to come out of the utility reserve and then adjust the rates accordingly for 2021 is implication. I'm not sure what your opinion is of that motion versus if we have to stay stabilization reserve, or if I want me to see specifically utility reserve.
I'd probably let Diane McMorty possibly weigh in on that one. She's around still.
I have. Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, we, we could basically do it either way. You know, we could just let it come out, flow through as a deficit in the reserve for this year. And then it would, it would work into the, into the rates for next year. So you would end up probably with a little bit higher rate increase than what Kate had indicated in the policy, because you're, you've got your ongoing increase, but then you're also catching up from this year.
Okay. So would it just be added to the S C C then, or because if it comes out of the utility reserve, I'm thinking for garbage, then would it just be added to the S C C amount, or would be added to the operations?
I'm not 100% sure how it would flow through the model. It depends kind of what, what account it flows through. We'd have to just run that through the model. It could be the S C C fee or, or one of the, or the actual flat fees. We'd have to just run that through the model to find out where it would hit.
How much do we have right now in the stabilization reserve? I'm concerned just because Mayor Haren, are you planning for that, you were planning for that motion that you emailed us, right? So if that passes, it's $700,000 out of it, and we've been eating through it quite quickly for COVID. So I'm just wondering, how much do we have left in there?
Um, I, you'd probably have to give me a couple of minutes to look it up because I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Because, I mean, that does affect kind of what I'm looking for funding sources. I'm just getting we've used the word stabilization reserve many times this year. I'm getting a little worried.
Yeah, I feel like I'm, I'm pretty sure it's above 4 million uncommitted right now. But that, that doesn't include the story, the 2 million that we've, we've already kind of assigned towards the COVID response. So there, I think there's about two, two and a half million left, something like that.
Okay. So if we were just to keep it going and have the utility rates adjust themselves next year with my motion, that's also fine, because I'm just thinking it keeps purity of the model and it doesn't. I'm, I'm thinking this isn't an emergency as opposed to having an emergency. We've gone through a few emergencies already.
I think that's a great line of thinking, Council Hughes.
Okay, because I'm thinking the garbage tags, how much are they if I have an extra garbage bag? It's like two something, right? Look at you, Kate, how much is it?
The bag tags?
225 maybe?
225 right now, but obviously we're not like garbage is, we're doing no bag tags right now, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, life is supposed to return to normal one day, at which point garbage will be back on the agenda, right? So okay, so 225 is the regular amount. Okay. And as far as, what do they do with it? Do you know what they're doing with the styrofoam after they get it? Like what they where does it, does it become a what?
So there's quite a processing that happens in the back of Jack Craft in their trailer. I don't know the chemicals that are used, but the, I can smell them. So it's a substantial process. And then once they break down the styrofoam using a chemical process, it's then or turned into, they can turn it into the styrofoam that goes underneath countertops or baseboards, et cetera. So they, they market it to third party suppliers after that.
Okay. All right. So because I'm thinking it's only a business if you actually have everything you need to process the entire process, right? So
They just do the small piece. So they basically break down the styrofoam that we give them, and then they sell that compressed piece to the next company that then makes baseboards or makes countertops, et cetera.
The styrofoam gets to have a new life of being more compressed styrofoam, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor Haren, if it's possible, I'd like to bring forward my motion when it's time.
Yeah, as Council Hanson has a question, though.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Council Hanson.
Uh, thanks. And I was kind of surprised with the, with the cost too. And, and I guess I was starting to wondering if we were subsidizing this contractor in his work, but I guess, Kate, are we going to get any additional services with the increase in cost, or is it business as usual, just an increase in cost?
Just an increase in cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, can we, next time, if this, if we continue to do the processing, can you invite Council down one time when they're there? I know Council McKay and Council Hanson saw it in action when they were in for McMurray, I think, for the care conference, but I would love to see it just, just from my own knowledge sometime. So Council Broadhead looks like so.
Heads up. We'll definitely work with the contractor and see if we can set something up to
Thank you.
Happens, yeah.
Cool. All right, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So the motion I'd like to bring forward is the one I emailed to council earlier, which is that the city's in Albert continue with styrofoam recycling program. And I have missed the word and there, Cheryl, so and adjust the 2021 utility rates to reflect any cost increases.
Okay. Council McKay, you have a question? Okay, I won't accept that quite yet. Council Hughes, go ahead. Council McKay?
I just have a question, Council Hughes, is it just for one year? I mean, I'm just wondering in relation to the length of a contract, we would have to sign with our contractor. Are we talking one year only, or does this go into impertuent?
We're going until we say, until we say stop is what it's intention to do. But I'm just saying, where do we get the funding? It's going to be from the utilities.
Okay.
But we can't adjust the utility rates now, so we have to do them in 2021.
Okay, but I, I'm just saying potentially, though, this allows him is, I mean, if, if we're faced with the same situation where rates go up three times more again next year, and now along, no longer becomes something we can afford. And we, we can back out.
You know, the count, the city's going to go into contracts to determine however long we agree to, whatever we agree to. And if it becomes higher, I'm sure Kate will come back and let us know, just like she did this time, and let us make a decision about whether or not we want to continue or not. So this is just basically saying, let's just keep going. And the funding source is going to come out of utilities and we will adjust it in seven months' time for the nine cents per month that we will be increasing.
Okay, a little bit more because we're making up for this year too.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I just, okay, thanks.
Yeah, all right. I'm accepting your motion, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. So the reason why, when I saw this and suggested that we stop it, I thought for nine cents a month, it just did not seem like it was actually at a cost prohibitive level at this point. If it had said it was $6 more a month or something, it'd be different. But I think that when I look at 3,370 kilograms of styrofoam, that's over 7,400 pounds of styrofoam that's come out of our landfills. And that's in itself quite tremendous, considering that styrofoam, as Kate said, is quite lightweight. So it's not just a pound, it's substantially more in volume to get rid of that. And I think that this is just a much more environmentally responsible way of handling. It also takes pressure off of residents, because as soon as you get one large package with styrofoam, your brown bin is full. And so then the other option is then stick it all into a bag and then put that in the landfill, which was re-determined is going to cost you $2.20 if you even did that once a year. So this, in spite of it being a a small increase, will actually cost you less if you even use this service once per year than using an extra garbage bag, because you can't fit it all into your ground bin. So I, when I look at this, I just think it seems to be just a a way to actually, once again, make sure that we don't fill up the landfills with something that can be recycled and that can find a new life as a denser styrofoam. And that nine cents a month, I don't think it's a level that residents would say they still don't see value in it. It looks like the previous cost was three cents a month. So, I mean, we're, we're only, the cost of maintaining this per month on a regular basis at this point would be 12 cents per month per household. Even if we have to do a small increase to adjust for the cost differences this year, it's going to be something like 15 cents and then go back down. I don't think it's something that people would say they don't see the value in. So having to pay for garbage, they can actually find a way to address this without having that be a cumbersome element. So I'm, I'm asking council to, to continue this going. And, and if, again, if it does increase further, we can always have that discussion. But I, I didn't think that at the rate of just a little over a dollar a year, that we would say that it's too much for people to handle, but it does take a lot of stress off people. Because at least they have a venue to take it off of their hands. And they know that they're not destroying the environment while they're doing it. That's it.
All right, anyone else? I'm just going to thank you, Council Hughes. When I opened up the gender port, I was kind of surprised at the direction. And I kind of indicated to Mr. Skolw at our pre-meeting that this probably would be a change and that we might need to have a motion ready. And you came up with it yourself. So thank you for that. I like Council McKay's idea. I think we should probably see if we can start doing this ourselves or encourage some competition on the market. I think that might be an appropriate thing to do. I put this on my Facebook page this morning. There's 19 comments already in favor of the fee and keeping the styrofoam process and recycling, because Council Watkins very adeptly pointed out, there's a cost to landfill, there's a cost to reclaim landfills, there's environmental costs and honestly, one of the things that's getting the biggest hit during COVID is the environment. And, you know, all the single use plastics that we were trying to stop and minimize, you know, through bags and straws, et cetera. It's just, you, you can't even bring your own bags into some grocery stores now. So, yeah, the environment's taking a hit. And I think this is another commitment from the city, St. Albert, and our council that is so important to us. So thank you for that, Council Hughes. And it's another good argument why we need extended producer responsibility in Alberta. Anything to close, Council Hughes?
No, I just think this is going to be, this has been appreciated by residents so far. And considering we have 7,400 pounds in only five months. This is something that's brought value to people's lives. So I think that, as you've seen, I think people would be willing to pay an extra nine cents to not have that stress of getting something from home and then saying, what am I going to do with this two pounds of styrofoam? That's it. Thank you.
All right. In case you don't know the exact motion, it's in your chat, but call for the vote. That is unanimous. Well done. Okay. Now we can go on a tour of it. All right. How we do for time, the last thing, transit fares. Mr. Lake, are you with us?
I am.
All right. Thanks for joining us. Do you have a little bit of a presentation on this?
Well, not too much, just a basic overview of the submission to council. It's our intention to try and stay in pace with the regional, our regional partners relative to transit. And as you may have heard, the city of Edmonton will be re-initiating fares as of June 15. We are not able to, we or the other smaller regional partners are not able to reinstate fares until at least July 1. So we're providing a recommendation that the reinstatement of transit fares, which were suspended until May 31, 2020, as part of the city's response to dealing with the impact of COVID-19, be implemented as of July 1, 2020, to align with the city of Edmonton transit system. So background discussion, we worked very diligently with our partners and indeed, we were all on the same page at one point. And through executive decision, the city of Edmonton got directed to institute them a little bit faster. So they chose to implement fares for June 15. Then again, as indicated earlier, it's problematic for us to try and do that, but for that timeframe. So along with all of the other smaller areas, we are recommending July 1. We have been constantly in contact with our stakeholders or riders. And indeed, if we're able to confirm the specific date, we will set upon a communication program to indicate what the changes will be potentially for July 1, if the motion is approved. And we are in the midst of determining specific, a specific requirements for transit that may be required as a result of front boarding from our the chief medical and health officer through our E O C department. So at this point, we don't have a confirmation of specifics that will be required. We anticipate that it will be P P E or masks for passengers, P P E for the drivers and, and hopefully then that will be sufficient to reinstate fares. So with that, any questions? I'd be happy to entertain.
Probably going to be a question on why we can't do it on the 15th. I'm, I'm worried. Go ahead, go ahead.
So the, we have to re-establish our outlet sales, et cetera, for distribution of passes. And passes are typically sold approximately two weeks before the beginning of the month. So that's one. So that's one item is we don't have passes out there at the outlets to distribute. Secondly, the lack of confirmation of specific COVID-specific requirements may or may not complicate our start date.
Okay, my bigger question is that two-week overlap or underlap, whatever you want to call it, is going to pose a problem. Because we've got members out there, I get a message from a certain individual, I'm sure you know very well, Mr. Lake, with a pass and he needs to go into Edmonton. So he now has to pay when he's, you can't transfer.
So what, so we have confirmed with ETS that all of our existing passes, that March and April passes that residents may have in their possession will be honored on ETS. So they'll be free on our system, they'll be honored on ETS.
That's awesome.
So it'll be seamless for any of our users.
Okay, that's good regional collaboration. Okay, I'm seeing hands up. Who was first? Council Broadhead, did you have a question? Oh, Council Mackay that did for sure. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Council Mackay.
Mind you, you asked the one question of mine in relation to the seamless. The other one, Mr. Lake, would be, so just can you go over again? How Edmonton's going to do, if you know, if you've had any discussions with how Edmonton's going to get around their front entry versus the rear entry? Are they just hoping their PPE? I realize some of their buses are, they have a little bit different setup than our buses with protection. But are are you have any other additional information?
Well, I can confirm that the city of Edmonton has approximately 700 of their units. Indeed, the only units dispatched for their reduced level of service at this time come with the physical barriers that were installed pre-COVID. And as a subsequent benefit of those physical barriers, they they are adequate for COVID, COVID protection. The regional players, the smaller players surrounding Edmonton do not have physical barriers. So therefore, potentially supplementary measure or mitigations might not, might have to be implemented. And we don't totally know what they are.
Okay, so have we, so we are working through EOC to seek clarification from the Alberta Health or Chief Medical Officer Health?
That's correct, and we're trying to get a consistent directive for all of the smaller centers.
Okay, all right, because I can imagine the logistics behind that. Would there be an expectation if a if a resident or a rider wanted to get on the bus and didn't wear personal protection equipment, we would supply it?
There is consideration for that. We are sort of trying to understand what the volume of that might be, given the fact that the province is handing out, I think it's 20 million through various, well, fast food distribution outlets. So it is our hope that the majority of people will have it. And again, our communication will be encouraging that, of course. Whether or not we refuse ridership, if you don't have a mask, I think it would be better if we had an opportunity to provide one for somebody who wanted to but wasn't able to get one. But that's to be determined again, in conjunction with our EOC. We had a discussion about that this morning. There is something certain about supply for our current operations, let alone the public as well. So that's to be determined at this point.
All right, thanks. You can always drive the bus through McDonald's, I guess, and.
You know, actually, it's not a bad idea. If we could work earning rate us, we might work something out like that, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Council Hughes.
Thank you. So how, when did Edmonton decide they were going to start on June 15?
Thursday about 4:30.
Okay, so just recently?
Yes.
So I mean, I'm just, they can, I'm trying to figure out why they can do it for the 15th and yet we can't. I know you said you have those, those concerns, but at the same time, how could, like, they're even a larger operation than we are, and they're they're thinking they can pull it off in just like two more business days than what we're giving if we were to do it today. So can you give me a little bit more insight into that?
Well, I suppose if we had that many buses and we're not operating at 50% capacity as we currently are and already had physical barriers that acted as COVID screens, we would have less issue about doing that. But we are operating at a 50% capacity with a, with no COVID prevention devices other than physical distancing. So knowing what we may be able to, or what we may have to do to reinstate front boarding is a big sort of ambiguous aspect right now, which we can't commit to because we don't know what it is.
So Mayor Hare mentioned about the overlap issue, and this is my concern. Is that it's my understanding that there's quite a number of people who get on the St. Albert buses in Edmonton to get off in Edmonton and either on commuting there or back. And they actually, although our stats seem to be that they, I believe it's when they cross over the St. Albert line that we're counting them in the stats, but they're getting on in Edmonton and getting off in Edmonton. So if Edmonton's charging for transit, but we're not charging for transit, and those people are from Edmonton or get on in Edmonton, what's the deal then? Are they going to be paying us or are they not paying? Because then it's a loophole where they don't have, they can, everyone can ride our buses and not pay. So what is the intention to handle Edmonton riders in Edmonton on St. Albert buses?
For the two-week period in between the 15th and July 1, I would anticipate that they would be riding free as as though they were St. Albert residents. Anecdotally, that the percentage of ridership that we have, that is basically Edmonton people using St. Albert buses within Edmonton is quite low. It's about 2% or so during the the peak time. So it's not a huge aspect of our, our fare income.
But it could be one if people think they can avoid paying for the buses for two weeks if they get on a St. Albert bus.
Well, I would suggest it could cost us much more money to make that opportunity feasible than the money we would generate by charging for those two weeks.
Okay, I'm just thinking this could, this could be an unintended consequence of what's going to be happening on this because the minute Edmonton realizes they don't have to pay and this number of buses goes by, we could be looking at a lot more traffic coming into St. Albert buses that's.
Yes, yeah, you're right. Those that, those that are that detailed involved could take advantage in that manner.
Okay. And we are not still planning to do any type of shielding at all on St. Albert buses, right? For the front loading, the intention is not to do anything beyond the masks for the workers?
That is our encouragement at this time, correct.
Okay, I'm wondering, has there been a discussion about just at least having them for the ones that go into Edmonton? And that way, you'd have, at least for the commuting ones that go into Edmonton, has there been any discussion all about doing, doing that? So that way, at least you have the same level as when you go into Edmonton as the Edmonton buses have?
We have not broken it down. That would mean we'd have to dedicate specific buses and reduce our capacity, our spare capacity by fixing specific buses to specific routes. So that that would be a significant takeaway from our flexibility in terms of bus assignment. But we do have a unit price for installing. When you say shields, I believe you might mean barriers.
Yeah.
We do have that unit price. So if if it was to, if we were directed to do a certain amount of buses, we could provide that pricing. The consequences of limiting the fleet to specific buses for specific routes would be some unintended consequences that would take us a little while to figure out what that impact would be and report back to you.
Okay, the other thing I'm wondering is, I understand that the U of A and Grant McEwen are not, they're not planning to go, they're planning to go online in the in the fall, at least at this point. So my also understanding is that the U passes were not charged for a lot of students at U of A for this last semester.
That's correct.
I mean, U of A is a huge market in the transit world for St. Albert. And so if we don't have those riders and we don't have the service and we also don't have the U passes, have we looked at what this is going to affect for our deficit revenues or the bottom line?
We have included COVID impact on the U pass agreements that we have with all the post-secondary. And that is part of Ms. Morty's financial reviews provided to you guys earlier. And you are correct, at this point, U pass negotiations have been deferred for a year based on no onsite classes, at least until January, so.
Okay, so and so when we did our COVID deficit projections, were you also projecting no U passes for September? Is what I'm asking.
It went right up to October, I think is the latest projection that you had.
Right, well, that was assuming that we were back up and running in October. But if the U of A is not going to be doing anything but online until January, then there's no U pass revenue for four months. So was that projected into the numbers?
So I, we have provided that to finance, but I don't believe finance packaged that in beyond the October date. Actually, Diane, here, she can probably speak to that for us. Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. So I mean, the last financial forecast that we provided to council was on the assumption of an October 1 date. So with this new information, the next update would include this this remedy being removed.
And also that we also have further impact in 2020. So Diane, then we'd also have less operating too. I'm assuming we'd have less operating as well for that, right? Because.
That's correct. There there would probably, there would, we'd have to work with with Mr. Lake. Yeah, because it'd be reduced hours, reduced bus hours.
Okay, so we'll be seeing that in a couple of weeks, I'm guessing.
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, I think I saw Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll take this opportunity to ask the question around how's the Smart Fair going? Would have been happy to have this on board now, would have made it a bit easier. Any update that you could give us?
We are preparing an update actually to be submitted to all councils at the same time. And I would hope it would be for your next meeting. So in, yeah, in respect of trying to inform everybody at the same time, that'll be coming forward pretty soon. So there's no question, it would have helped us evaluate things much more, to quantify things much more specifically because of the metrics that we get benefit of through Smart Fair. But we're not there yet, so.
Fair enough, I'll honor that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good question. Any more questions for Mr. Lake? Great, anyone want to make the motion? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Lake, did you have something to add?
Actually, it may not be appropriate, and I'm sure I'll get smacked by Mr. Lafar after, but I want to take opportunity to indicate that we have hired a new Transit Service Delivery Manager. His name is Etor Inacito, and he started with us today.
Oh, that's nice to know. Totally appropriate. Yeah, everyone says hi. I'm going to go to Council Broadhead because all things transit goes to him. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll read the recommendation that's in front of me. I recommend that the reinstatement of transit fares, which were suspended until May 31 of 2020, as part of the city's response to dealing with the impact of COVID-19, be implemented as of July 1, 2020, to align with the city of Edmonton's transit system.
Excellent. Any opening comments?
Just I, COVID-19's been hard on many industries, public transit did not escape. As a matter of fact, the very nature of public transit made it particularly vulnerable to, you know, the COVID-19 and the mitigation efforts to try and spread its or mitigate its spread. So it's been tough for the industry across not only Canada but across the world as well. So with the introduction, the reintroduction of transit fares, I think more than anything, it's a sign that we're starting to come out of the COVID-19 black box, maybe that's the word to use, I don't know. But anyway, July 1.
All right, well said. Yeah, I think I heard that Toronto West, you may not even know, losing how much money a day because of transit?
Well, they put out a, on a normal year, they put out over a billion rides. So it's it's huge. The the National Transit Association is asking the federal government for $400 million per month. Yeah, to help defer the cost. So where that goes, we'll see. But nonetheless, you know, what's before us is that we're starting to come out and we're going to move back into asking our patrons to start to help defer the cost.
Great, all right, call for the vote. That's unanimous. What time is it? Do you guys need a bit of a break? We've been an hour and a half, go a little bit longer. Real good. All right, we're plowing through, can't do the public hearings. But we do have the emergent item on the patios and pop-ups stores. Mr. Skolw, who's doing a presentation on this one? Oh, Donnie is, okay. All right, Ms. George, go ahead.
Well, good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Donnie George, Director of Engineering, and I'm also joined by Dean Shig this time, Manager of Transportation, to answer any questions that he may have. I would like to acknowledge that this AR has been a multi-departmental initiative, and a lot of discussion has gone into preparing this in a very, very short time to get in front of council today. So as a background, in order to limit community transmissions of COVID-19, businesses have been subject to various protocols, restrictions and regulations. In order to assist the St. Albert business community as part of the phased provincial relaunch of the economy, administration is proposing to implement a streamlined permitting process for minor patios and sidewalk retail pop-ups on city-owned land to allow businesses to expand to outdoor patio space immediately adjacent to their business premises. Minor patios and sidewalk retail pop-ups are those that may be placed right outside a storefront without fencing or barriers permitting sales of food and wares. Administration proposes that an amendment be made to the traffic bylaw to establish a temporary permitting process. If implemented, will enable businesses in the downtown area to apply for a permit to establish a minor patio or sidewalk retail pop-up directly in front of their store on city sidewalk. The main features of this new permitting process are as follows. It is a temporary process in place until October 15, 2020, unless otherwise extended by council resolution. It will effectively be applicable to businesses in the city's downtown. It will permit unfenced minor patios and retail pop-ups abutting right up to storefronts. No alcohol sales will be permitted. There will be no fees for permits, and also this will not be done on a cost-sharing basis. Therefore, any costs incurred for the setup of a minor patio or sidewalk retail pop-up will be borne by the businesses. If implemented, the city may have to observe some costs associated with rerouting pedestrian traffic on city sidewalks or vehicle or traffic to extend the pedestrian sidewalks, and we may even lose a parking lot or two. The businesses will be required to provide proof of insurance and an indemnity to the city as part of the permitting process. The city's transportation staff will coordinate the delivery of the permitting process, which comes with a set of conditions to be met by the applicant. Administration will be prepared to start accepting this application on June 2, that is tomorrow. Administration will observe and monitor the impact of the various strategies employed and lessons learned will inform future process improvements and any potential regulation, regulatory changes. Administration is proposing this as the first phase of implementing patios and pop-ups in the city during COVID-19, and is prepared to look into streamlining a process for larger patios, which would include the ability for alcohol sale and patios on private property. A process for larger patios and and patios on private property would enable making changes to the land use bylaw. Therefore, administration recommends that council approve bylaw 302020, being Amendment 15 to Traffic Bylaw 182005, as attached to the AR to support this initiative. And we will be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Awesome. I don't know, maybe it was a question for Sean, has there been any indication of restaurants or or stores in our downtown wanting this?
Yeah, so we spoke of the Chamber of Commerce earlier this afternoon. And while we haven't been directly reached out to by businesses in the downtown, the chamber's perspective was that this would be welcome from the businesses downtown, from both restaurants and retailers alike. So we think that this would, you know, allow for them to offer, operate their business safely in an outdoor environment, and we expect that we will have uptake.
Excellent. I mean, I hope so. Would this allow, and I was thinking of a restaurant I frequent frequently, Lysus, would they, instead of going out their front, could they go their back, which is the parking lot? And because that's public land? Would that be allowed? Maybe Dean has to answer that.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, I, I, I think any opportunity, it's, it's gonna be kind of a uh, as requested service that we provide. So we'll see what's requested and how we can best accommodate, and I think something like that uh, would definitely be looked into. There'd be no, no misalignment to what's being proposed here in regards to an amendment to the bylaw. So however, we can best suit and service the, the businesses.
Cool. Uh, questions? Okay, I got Mackay Broadhead Hanson.
Sounds like a law firm. Um, we're not, not a very good one, but it sounds like a, sounds like a law firm. Um, the question I would have then, I mean, and you have to remember that right now, so just to be clear, no alcohol sales would be permitted in this temporary situation. Is that correct? I'm just confirming.
That's right.
So maybe some restaurants might not want to take us up on it right now at this particular time, but it would offer, offer an opportunity. The other kind of question I would have, um, you talk about, um, uh, kind of working around uh, some of the patio disruptor or the sidewalk disruptions. Uh, I'm curious about some of the road disruptions. Would I, we're all aware of what's happening in Edmonton with some of the shutdowns of major uh, lane ways. Um, are we considering this as well? Would we shut down a portion of Perron Street, let's say?
So at this time, there's no formal road closure itself. We'd be still looking to accommodate traffic uh, down Perron. We're gonna have to coordinate. I know there is some utility work and construction, of course, that's happening. Uh, so we'll have to try and appease all stakeholders, but right now there's no formal road closure anticipated with this.
All right. Thanks. I, I appreciate, uh, this is, I think this is, uh, very good, and I think that, uh, it's an opportunity.
We're not in debate yet.
I know, I know, but I'm just, I'm asking, I'm just saying, I want to say thank you for doing that.
Uh, Council McCay. Go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Okay, well, I just further to the question around, uh, so restaurants have an opportunity owner, uh, open a patio. Uh, is, is there some prohibition that wouldn't allow residents to have a beer with their meal, or what's the story about that? I'm not sure I, I'd link the two.
For me, I can feel that question.
Um, so that all comes down to the AGLC requirements. And, um, the permitting process requires for the AGLC, and so the types of permits um, through the AGLC, that we understand the permitting process is around three weeks long. But in addition, those patios need to have fences and barriers around them. So they're more like a major patio. So that's why we wouldn't be able to permit it at this time.
Okay, fair enough. There's a reason. Uh, thank you very much.
Yeah. Council Hanson.
Uh, that was essentially my question, uh, was thinking about Louisa's and wanting to sit outside, but not being able to have a glass of wine with your dinner. Um, but then it kind of says later on in the, um, agenda report, we're prepared to look into streamlining a process for larger patios, which would include the availability of alcohol. So, so it kind of says, depends how big your patio is, but is that right? Am I reading that right?
I, I guess we were just writing it in haste. We could have done it a little bit better. Um, major as opposed to minor, which is why it says larger, but if the size doesn't matter, it's about the barrier surrounding the actual premise this.
Okay, I would just say that I think that the premise of this whole, um, temporary permit is, is really good, but I just think that some of the restaurants, that what they're really craving for is the ability to allow people to sit outside and enjoy the sunshine. And usually if it's a dinner hour or lunch hour, that could include a beer or a glass of wine. So hopefully we can move that part of it along quickly so that they can, um, you know, increase their sales as, as, as restaurants do, uh, and invite, um, maybe a, a larger crowd in that way. So thanks.
Uh, Kate, weird, Marta, we already allow, like, I'm thinking of Privada. Is it because it's fenced and they have a special, so you, Privada's got a patio on public land in our downtown core. Um, it's fenced. So, so if they meet those requirements of fencing and the appropriate AGLC license, then they would be able to serve. Cause we already have existing regulations to allow it.
Yeah. So my understanding is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dean, you might know about this a little bit, or Sean. Um, Privada kind of was part of the, um, downtown beautification back in like 2014, 2015, and they were the sole business that took us up on when we tried to do patios in the past. And so I'm not sure how the permitting process for AGLC was done, but based on what we're discussing right now, they do meet the AGLC requirements to get their liquor license. Um, so that's why they, they already have their patio and they're good to go. They kind of established it beforehand. This is kind of a new streamlined process, um, for those that aren't in that place now. Um, and then if for, for the ones that would be major patios and also those on private land. Um, those would, we would be looking at streamlining some sort of process under the land use bylaw.
I think I saw Council Hughes' hand go up too.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. Why? The bylaw doesn't specifically state that it's supposed to be downtown only, but the background just says downtown only. So, um, is the intention just to be downtown or is it actually available citywide?
This is available citywide on all city-owned land. However, effectively, it really only applies downtown because all the other lands are privately owned land. So these patios won't be able to be established there in accordance with this process unless it's city-owned land.
So if it's on private property though, and the landlord said it was okay, could they also set up a pop-up patio there?
Uh, so what's involved in a pop-up patio, it would just depend on that.
I'm just wondering, like, it doesn't, is it going to, I understand that we're saying a city-wide, but really it's not because of the requirement of being city land.
Well, you, you can, you can do it on private land and you have to do it through the process that's established in the land use bylaw. And so what happens there is you have, and Adrian just popped on, but you have the notification requirements for the surrounding businesses. It takes longer than what we anticipate this new process will take. Yeah.
Okay. If, if you want to.
Please, yeah.
Uh, yeah. So, uh, I guess basically Marta kind of touched on it, but uh, the intent of this is a real, really quick win. We also have the ability, um, pending all the other, you know, requirements and approvals for some of the private lands, if they do have the, um, if they do have the, the right, um, I guess authorizations in place from landowners or landlords. But it, it, it requires that the land to use be a permitted use. So again, to Counselor Hanson's question about, you know, liquor, um, or having a drink with your dinner, those types of things that are generally discretionary uses, which then encounters this problem with noticing requirements and with a land use bylaw minimum that would be required to negate that. Um, this was the kind of, the, the, the best quick win that we could come up with for now, recognizing that we might have to take another step here coming up.
Okay, okay. Um, and one more question is just, are we planning to do any type of surveying or feedback of both residents and businesses? Just because I know this is supposed to expire at the end of October, and this might be an opportunity to determine whether or not we wanted to have it be a more of a permanent fixture in the summer downtown. So is there any intention of getting feedback before, like, not now, but in four months' time, say?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just jump in on the, so we have heard from the Chamber of Commerce that they would like to see this extended for the foreseeable future based on the success this summer. So I think administration at the end of this would probably look to engage the stakeholders related to this and just see, you know, what, what that would look like. But for now, it's just a deal with the immediate issue related to COVID.
Okay. I think this should be interesting this year as well with the farmer's market not being downtown. Cause some businesses loved it down there and some businesses hated it. And so this will be an experiment to see what the changes would be to the downtown core in the weekends, um, without having the farmer's market there, whether, whether it actually helps or hurts the businesses that are open. So. Um, but I know it's not really to pop up, but I just think that will also be a constant, an experiment that we weren't actually planning to conduct up to this point. So, thank you. That's it.
Great. Any more questions? Any member of council want to make this motion? Actually, it's bylaws of three motions. Go ahead, Council Hanson, I'll go with.
Uh, that bylaw thirty twenty twenty being amendment fifteen to traffic bylaw eighteen twenty, uh, two thousand and five be read at first time.
All right. Thanks for any opening comments?
Thanks for the quick win. I think, uh, people are looking for some quick wins and this is nice. This is really great. It's really progressive. So thanks very much.
Anyone else? I'll actually just say what Jackie did. I just really appreciate, and I hope the public recognizes, um, the quick rollout of this. Had a couple of emails because other municipalities have done this, and, uh, so why can't we in St. Albert? And you know, normally this we would have maybe put through the recovery task force, but, um, I love the June 2nd start date for this, so we needed to get it in front of us today. So, um, this, and this is, we need to really make sure that everyone realizes this is just the first step. Um, and we're trying to make it a bigger and broader, um, change so we could have more outdoor shopping and eating spaces in St. Albert. Anything to close, Council Hanson?
Baby steps, but good steps. So, uh, no, nothing more.
Okay, call for the vote. That's unanimous. Uh, second time?
That bylaw thirty twenty twenty be read a second time.
Anything to add? Oh, Council McCay?
Uh, no, I would, actually, I was gonna wait until later on the third one. Sorry.
Okay, call for the vote. That's unanimous. Uh, I'm gonna go to Council Broadhead for unanimous consent.
Fair enough. The unanimous consent be given for consideration of third reading of bylaw thirty slash twenty twenty.
Thank you for that. Call for the vote. Excellent. That's unanimous. Uh, Council Hanson, go ahead with third and final.
Uh, that bylaw thirty twenty twenty be read a third and final time.
Council McCay?
Okay, yeah, I, basically, I think you said it, Council Hanson said it, and I even think, uh, other during questions, we've all said it. Quick win. Um, just shows that, um, as we move into relaunch, and I think I'm gonna use Council Broadhead, the black hole or the black box of what is COVID. I think we have to look at other opportunities. And, uh, so wherever else we can look at, I think we should be encouraged. Like, how do we start to cut through? And I know we have green tape coming in, but I think there's opportunities that we can look at all of our, going back and looking at all of our existing land use bylaw or traffic bylaws or other bylaws around how do we, how do we start to pull us out of this, uh, black, black box? So, uh, congratulations, administration.
Right. Anything to close, Council Hanson? Call for the vote. Unanimous. All right. Well done. Thank you, Mr. Skolbo for making that happen. Uh. Council motions, they're mine, so I will. First one is the flag policy. Uh, Council Jolly, you are deputy mayor. So can I pass this over to you?
You bet.
All right.
You get in?
I will read it. Uh, that the flag display policy be amended at the following under section seven. H National Day of Remembrance of the Battle of Vimy Ridge. I National Day of Remembrance for Victims of Terrorism. J National Day of Remembrance and Action on Violence Against Women and renumber the concurrent section seven H as section seven K. There we go.
Thank you. So before I accept that, any questions? I see none, so I'll accept that. And anything on opening comments?
We tossed around putting this one on consent because I think that would be pretty easy. Um, I'll just say that thanks to, um, the staff for turning around my information request on how we could align our flight policy with the province and the federal government, and these were the days that they recognized as missing. And so this is just to update and align our policies.
All right, anyone else? Mayor Heron to close?
Nothing.
Call for the vote. That's unanimous. Back to you, Mayor Heron.
No, you keep it.
Oh, we have one more?
Yeah. Um, I need to have a motion on the chat. Um, about waiving the notice of motion time period. I think Ledge has it ready. Am I right on that?
I was wondering about that when I read the email, because that wasn't in there.
We're just gonna get into the chat right now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, um, the, the motion to, to waive the time limit does need to go, but you should read the notice of motion first.
Okay.
You make the motion to waive the time period so that you can debate it today.
Okay, me too. I actually need to find it. Hold on. You'd think I would have that ready. Sorry, guys. Cause it's a long one.
So, Mr. Lafar, you wanted to read that in, and then before I accept that, we can have an emotion to waive notice?
No, you can, she's just, what, what the mayor is about to do is to serve notice of motion in the normal way.
Okay.
Not a motion, she's just saying, I'm giving notice that I want to make this motion. Then she will seek your permission to make a motion to waive the time limits so that the, that this motion can be dealt with immediately.
Okay, I'm ready.
That's clear.
I'm ready. Okay. Okay, um, I'm gonna move that, uh, an independent third-party operational and fiscal review be undertaking with the objectives of A, identifying long-term sustainable expense management solutions to ongoing budget challenges. And B, recommending measures to provide quality, affordable municipal programs and services in the most effective or efficient and effective manner while maintaining, uh, responsible taxation. That the review be carried out in two phases. Uh, A, phase one focusing on the following services to the public and corporate functions. Community services, economic development, CAO's office, uh, recreation and parks, transit, strategic services and environment to be completed by October 31st, 2020. So that any recommendations arising from it may be considered by council in establishing the 2021 operating and capital budgets. And phase two, focusing on the following services to the public and corporate functions, planning and development, legal and ledge, uh, utilities, just financial services, engineering services, public works, emergency services and human resources and safety to be completed by June 30th, 2021. So that any recommendations arising from it may be considered by council in establishing the 2022 operating and capital budgets. And number two, that the review will at a minimum consider what services the city provides and how the services are provided, emphasizing what services and programs the city should deliver or can afford to deliver and what level of of what level or standard of service and B, identify alternative service delivery methods and opportunities. Sorry, my dog's right here and she's having a dream or he's making me laugh. I'm sorry. So B, identify alternative service delivery methods and opportunities that have the potential to result in expenditure reductions. Uh, the third part of the motion is that the internal audit steering committee be asked, uh, was tasked with selecting the party to conduct the review after a competitive procurement process. And thereafter, providing governance oversight so that party, including vetting their findings and recommendations and provide those findings and recommendations to council for both phase one and phase two, together with I, with the internal audit steering committee's own comments as deemed appropriate by the committee. Fourth part is that the CAO present to council for approval, the proposed scope of review and deliverables to be included in their request for proposals prior to initiating a competitive procurement of external management consulting services to conduct the review. And finally, that the remainder of the money allocated to the internal audit steering committee approximately 160,000 be reallocated as well as any money previously approved in the budget for internal service reviews approximately 100,000 be used to fund this initiative, and the remainder of the funds up to 700,000 come from the stabilization reserve. Wow. Okay.
Great. So I'm open to that. So I guess I need a motion, um, to waive, uh, notice. I don't know, Mayor Heron, if you want to do that or someone else wants to jump in?
I can do it. Is it in my chat now?
Yeah, that's right there.
There it is. Okay. Okay. So I will move that the 21-day advance notice period for notice of motion be waived in accordance with section 23.8 of the procedure bylaw three thousand and eighteen.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, I'll accept that. Uh, any opening comment? Okay, I'll accept that. Any opening comment? Oh, Council Hughes, do you have something?
Yeah, thanks. Um, service place, is that included in the scope of the review or not? I know it mentions recreational, but is that intended to include service place, or do we need to list that specifically?
I think we need to waive the motion before we have questions on the motion.
Sorry, you know what? I got all excited. Now you know what's gonna happen, so you're already, I've had that, no, go ahead, waive the motion.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mayor Heron, any comments on this?
I, I'm, I appreciate your, your indulgence on this, and we've talked about this on the 19th of May in response to a memo that Mr. Scoble sent. And when you see the, when you see the motion itself, there's, there's some tight timelines and tried to try to get this done by budget for 2020, and you know, we'll have to do an RFD, has to come back to council for approval, you know, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done, so I'm hoping to just do it now instead of 21 days from now. So I appreciate any indulgence as you guys can give me.
Anyone else? No, Mayor Heron to close? Call for the vote. That's unanimous. Okay, so before, I guess, Mr. LaFleur, did you want Mayor Heron to read that in kind of officially again, or is it?
Please, no.
She read it already.
Actually, strictly speaking, under the procedure bylaw, she has to read it in two more times. I just wonder if anybody would buy that. No, it's fine. She's already given notice of the motion. Council waives, you know, the 21-day requirement.
That's great. So let, let's go straight into questions, though.
I think I can answer, Council Hughes, when I wrote down Recreation and Parks in the Phase 1, that, that would include service, in my head, yeah.
And then, Mr. Scoble, now that you know that. How's your head working today? Are you thinking it's also service place, Mr. Scoble?
Well, yes, a, as per the motion on the floor, there, the scope will be developed and brought back to council for approval, but you know, it's, you know, there's the what's and the how, and certainly, you know, the operational aspects, but we need to look at our assets too. So, you know, when I write up the scope for this, we'll bring it back, but I, I think it would then certainly address service both as an operation, but also as an asset, so.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that one wasn't missed, since we're subsidizing it for 1.7 million right now. The other concern I had, I understand the total, and I understand the intention, we've had this discussion. But when I look at the timeline, I don't know how we're supposed to actually do an in-depth review. I'm gonna look at you, Mr. Scoble, because how we're supposed to accomplish this in-depth review in five months, you have to bring it back to council before it goes to RFP. That's gonna be two weeks from now. If not more, because we don't even have one on the 22nd, right? So, I don't remember which day we're on anymore, 16th, I guess, you could do it then. But then it still has to go to RFP, and then there's supposed to be a selection from the committee, and then the guy starts, or the firm starts. So, I'm thinking the earliest that firm would start would be the beginning of August. Just looking at the timeline of giving enough time for the RP to actually go through the proper procedures of at least 14 days. And then from there, they're supposed to come back and report within 90 days, and, and still go through all these areas in depth. And I'm just not sure if we're trying to, we're going to miss the opportunity to really do it enough of an in-depth scope by trying to meet a timeline of trying to meet the next budget. So, when I looked at that, I'm, I'm just, I just don't be sure how we can accomplish that much time, successfully getting our bang for our buck in that much time. So can you comment on that?
Well, there's, there's no doubt it's aggressive, but the intent is to start looking for some opportunities that can be addressed in the 2021 budget to minimize impact. So, you know, there's two phases to it, and the, and the first pay phase would be more, I guess, probably focused on individual operations. Likewise, the second phase would kick off with the remainder of functions. But then part of the second phase, if I write the scope up and present it to council this way, would be tying all the pieces together and maybe looking at assets and that. So, you know, the, the idea is to get as some opportunities for the 2021 budget, but most of the opportunities would come in the 2022. So, again, there's a tying together all the pieces in the second phase as well, so. But there's no doubt it's aggressive, but you know, at the same time, if, if it's not completed in these timeframes, we don't see those opportunities coming in 2021, which will be the year that, you know, we are coming out of COVID when times are toughest, so.
No, I understand the intention. I'm just not sure if, in the, in the intention to try to get so many things accomplished between now and the end of October, that it just, if you try to make five cakes at once, sometimes you can't make any cake properly. So I'm just not sure if we're gonna gloss over too much and trying to cover so much material, it's a short period of time.
Yeah, and you know, so once we go through the process, if this goes ahead and we select a vendor and discussion with them, you know, maybe they suggest that Phase 1 is downgraded a little bit to get that, and we do more in Phase 2. But the, the overall concept is to get some identification of opportunities to get into the 2021 budget. So, we may have to reduce the scope a little bit for Phase 1, once we select a consultant and discuss with them, but you know, we'll, I mean, at that point, it's with the internal audit steering committee to have those discussions.
The other thing was that some of these, if not most, if not all, are working differently, and at reduced capacities. And I don't know if they will, what they'll be at, let's say, by August or September. So when the firm is to do the review, I'm just wondering, I know that this, I know this, I'm part of the internal audit steering committee, so we can have a further discussion, but how do you review a department that's actually scattered right now and isn't doing all of what they would be doing in normal circumstances? So, are you gonna be putting that, I don't know how to handle that in the RFP? Or whether?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, but I mean, we've got the historicals as well, and, and normal operations in the, the 2020 approved budget. So you can actually, you know, probably put all the pieces together, and, and the fact that, you know, perhaps some things are a little scattered at the moment may identify opportunities that may not be readily apparent if things weren't scattered, right?
Okay. And to be clear, we have, we have yours administration's support to do this, because this is a major undertaking, and I, I believe we do, but I just wanted to make sure the public is aware, this is not simply a, a council-driven, that we have the support that we're working collaboratively with administration to make this happen.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, you know, we, as you mentioned, we had the discussion, and I've written, written a position paper on this, if you want to call it that.
Right, okay. Just so that people understand, this is a working together process, as opposed to a council directing administration to do something against their will. Okay, that's it, thank you.
I don't wanna, don't want to steal any of the mayor's comments, but from an administration perspective, there's never a better time than now to do something like this with the situation we find ourselves in.
Yeah, I mean, a COVID does present us opportunities if we choose to make them that way, and I think that's what we're doing in this motion, but thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mackay, go ahead.
Um, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I guess my questions follow a little bit along the lines of Council Hughes. Around the, if we're putting it actually in the motion as to the identified areas in Phase 1 and Phase 2, before an actual scope document, are, are we committing to the actual, as per the motion? Versus maybe kind of allowing us to devise a scope, like being a little bit more lenient with the, with the actual scope, because, I mean, those are huge, being directly involved with a number of these operation reviews or core services reviews. I mean, each one of those areas are linked, and they have webs into every other aspect of the organization. So, my only comment or concern would be, Madam, Madam Chair, and onto the mayor, would be, is it possible that rather than identifying that, we could be a little bit more generic, so that we would actually allow administration to work with whoever the vendor is to identify which areas, or did the internal audit, steering audit committee, pardon me, as to what areas we should target first, and why?
I mean, I think I would be open to that, once the vendor is selected, and we could come back to council for a, a scope change, but we tried to, you know, obviously, Mr. Scoble helped me draft this, and we tried to figure out the quick wins in the first phase.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, I'm just going back to something, I mean, if you looked at all of the assets in Recreation, Parks, or Transit, or I'm, I'm just picking someone, I mean, service being the big one, I mean, we actually had a whole task force for service in 2008 that took, was part of a, basically, a whole organizational operational review. So, I mean, it's, it's, this is big, this is, and this, this is big, and I know you eat an elephant one bite at a time, but yikes. I, I'm, I'm just a little concerned with the fact that you're, that, you know, we're, we're identifying what we, what we're moving forward, actually in a motion, and I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're gonna be coming back constantly for scope changes. And that brings me, now I guess my next one, is there, is there an actual reporting period sooner than the actual dates, like October 31st and June? Would they, would there be regular intervals, and who, would that come back to council, or would that come to the steering committee, or the audit committee?
I think it goes to audit committee.
Okay. Alright, okay, hi, those are my only comments, questions, and, and then the final, the, it's, the total amount is 700,000 for this? No, what is the total amount?
It would be seven, so it would be around a million dollars, $1 million, so it would be the 160 that we have currently approved for the audit, internal audit steering committee. And then we, you know, about 100,000 or so that's in the approved budget to do internal service reviews, so. And the whole, that, that up, plus up to a maximum of 700,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment here from Mr. Hiltz, I don't know if you want to, it sounds like you'd like to have the, the motion amended, can you comment on that?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. We, we left out IT services with strategic services, so we need to say strategic services and IT services, not just strategic services.
Okay. You haven't accepted the motion, have you? Okay, so I'll just take that as a friendly, IT institute, that's in Phase 1? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Ledge, can you make sure IT's in there? IT's a darn.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin, would it be fair to say that some of this work has been kickstarted through priority-based budgeting, and the fact that you have been looking for 7% within the departments, and so there is a sort of a a lens already on the organization around what change might look like? Because I, I do agree with others that this is a lot to, to bite off at once. But if some of the preliminary work has been done, maybe that's a help, so I'm wondering if you can comment on that.
Well, certainly, the priority-based budgeting tool will, will help with this. You know, it looks at priority-based budgeting for, in simplest terms, it looks at, you know, what are we doing? And, and council and administration, and work to prioritize that. But this review would be more about the, the how we're doing it, I guess. So we, we understand the what, and, and council can prioritize the what through the priority-based budgeting tool. And then this council, the review would look at is, how are we doing it, is there better ways to do it, what have you? I wouldn't say the 7 million proposed so far does a lot of legwork for this, I mean, will help a little bit, but it's, it's really just, you know, it's, it's really just things like vacancy pools, and, and, you know, freezing salary progressions within the steps and things like that. But I would say that, you know, we have done a number of internal reviews already, and, and more often than not, those have been completed by external. So there's, you know, that, that can be taken and reviewed and acted upon, so there, there actually is probably three or four departments that have had work done already in this area, and the consultant can just look at that and piece it, piece it together and move on. So there's, I guess, some of the legwork has already been done.
Thank you. That's all.
Hey, anyone else? Council Broadheader Watkins, nothing from you? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, I'll accept the motion with that, that friendly amendment, and Mayor Heron to open.
Alright, I'll start again with thank you, council, for faith in, not, not just me, but in Mr. Scoble and the conversations we've had in the last couple of weeks about how we can reimagine St. Albert. So, thank you for letting this come forth today. So, you know, stealing from Kevin's memo, the very first paragraph had something that I just loved. He said, "The council needs to be asking the questions, are we doing the right things?" And admin asks, needs to be asking the questions, "Are we doing the right things?" And so this operational view, we're gonna have to answer both those questions. Coming out of COVID provides us with an opportunity about what we do and how we do it. I've been on this city council for 10 years, and I've seen it evolve depending on the council of the day and/or the CAO of the day, or the senior team. Often the changes I have seen have come with an election, or a neat new CAO, or a reorganization. All these are sort of people-driven, but what's in front of us today is the opportunity to involve, to evolve, bring, find forth transformational change that is not people-driven, it's COVID-driven. Financial challenges we are facing has me asking myself, what lines of business should we as a city, at least at this local level, what should we be doing? The Constitution clearly dictates that the basic services such as emergency water, land use planning are ours. But should we be writing family and community support services, summer camps, transit, culture and recreation, cemeteries, and tourism? All of these are kind of up in the air, and we do them, because we always end up picking up what is not done. But in this time, the question is, should we? So that's kind of the what we're doing, but as Mr. Scoble was talking about earlier, it's how we do it too. We need to identify areas of excess, we need to look at capacity issues. Do we want to enhance services, or do we want to lower, lower service levels? We, they're just different ways to deliver services, you know. He's talked about a recreation or an economic development corporation. We could contract out to private businesses, we could allow private businesses to just, to, to take over. So there's lots of things on the how. And so COVID may be our catalyst, but one would argue that this type of review was long overdue, maybe, and should have been done at certain intervals anyways. See, number's in a relatively good place. It's been pointed out to us that we have low debt per capita, below average operating costs per capita. We, and we, we do that operations with a high level of service for residents. We have fewer employees per capita than comparable municipalities. Yet we all have a shared goal, this council, I mean, of improving our taxes while facing uncertain revenue. And, you know, priority-based budgeting, good question, Council Hanson, we still need to implement that, but that really does adjust the what, but not the how of our service delivery. So I want this review to look at the big picture of how everything will fit together, and so we can operate more effectively. I see this as very complimentary to the recovery task force work. And I can't remember who pointed it out, I think it was actually Council Hughes, and it's such an important piece of this, but normally a council would request such a review when they've lost confidence in their administration. And I want this to be very, very clear, that this is not the case here. This motion was formed after discussions and suggestions from Kevin and Carrie, as they've been part of similar reviews, and they see value. This is not to introduce stress into the organization. It is actually a challenge to Kevin, Carrie, the leadership team, and all of our staff to think creatively, find new ways to do things, and transform what and how we serve our residents. And this will finally provide council and admin with recommendations and data to allow for fact-based decision-making and accountable spending. And that's all I have.
Anyone else have comments? Okay, Council Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, COVID has been such a challenge for everybody. I don't think anyone, any on any spun the globe has been spared. And these challenges give us a chance to revisit and just reconsider how we are doing things, and whether or not we can do them better. And it's a challenge, as that is quote, and there's a potential that you can actually come up stronger in the result of it, so having it be a blow to our system, it could actually be that the system becomes a much more resilient in the end. So, I'm, I appreciate the fact that this has been brought forward. This is a, obviously, potential for many changes, but also many possibilities for improvements as we move forward. I'm a little concerned about the timeline of trying to get it all that much done in this timeline. I understand the intention, because we're trying to deal with budgets, but the, the timeline is, I think, a little aggressive, and I'm concerned that we might miss possibilities under it, but we can have that discussion further at the next committee level. And if it needs to be changed, we can bring it back to council at that time. So, I'm hoping that for the amount of money that we're putting into it, we get the amount of detail out of it that we can actually determine whether or not it's some feasible or viable ideas that are coming out of it in the end. But I do believe that this is an opportunity for us to truly try to find a way for us to become a lot more, a lot stronger in the end of this. And this is, I haven't seen anybody else move this type of thing forward. And so, as we come out of COVID, and the municipality, I'm not seeing them actually do this, but it's very innovative. And it also speaks to the fact that because And it also speaks to the fact that because administration is working with us to do this, this is not combative in any way, shape or form. And this is about trying to have together, both as a governance, as an administration, to have the city come forward and be able to find actually viable in the end and try to do this as positively as possible. So I appreciate how this is a collaborative effort. And I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of this. I am still concerned about the timelines, but I am very appreciative of the innovation that's been brought forward and the leadership from Kevin and from Carrie to have this discussion with council and for council. I'm hoping we'll probably approve this, but that council is working together to not just respond to this COVID crisis, but also to proactively make ourselves stronger as a result of this of this challenge. So that's it.
Counselor Mackay.
Most of my comments have already been discussed. I mean, like many, we've been involved in organizational change in numerous other maybe occupations or experiences in there. COVID nineteen is definitely a trigger event. Usually it's, you know, when we talk about having these operational reviews, that's usually there's a change in leadership or there's a change in mandate or certainly there's a trigger event like we've never seen before, like a pandemic, which gives us this opportunity. Like Counselor Hughes just talked about, the timelines are aggressive. And I'm, I'm somewhat concerned, although I'm, I'm going to support this because I think there's, this is a rare opportunity for us to take a really hard look at our operations. But I am concerned about the impact this is going to have. Change is difficult. Change management is stressful on our staff. And we're going to be trying to relaunch our community. And we're going to be trying to relaunch our normal business processes or what we're going to be hopefully going back to something near normal. And I'm, I'm worried about the stress that this will cause on our organization. So I think as long as we're conscious of some of these stressors and as long as we're conscious of what we're hopefully trying to achieve here and and recognizing the timelines that have already been talked about numerous times. I I think there are opportunities. And and so I'll I'll support it. But I I do have, I do have my concerns because, as I said, I've been involved with these and unfortunately there's sometimes we just don't get what we think we're going to get out of them, and we end up causing more disruption than and stress for some of our operations, then maybe we get out of that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna support it because I'm, I'm hopeful that we can actually learn that there's a better way of doing some of our existing services.
Right, anyone else? Go ahead, Counselor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly appreciate all the comments. I just want to lend my support to this particular initiative. When I read, you know, our CEO's position paper, if you will, certainly struck a note with me. And then, Madam Mayor, when you put forward this motion, just shows leadership, I think. And something that we have to do as a, as a community every now and then is go through these things, notwithstanding the impacts that Counselor Mackay noted, because they're not insignificant. But but nonetheless, sometimes you have to persevere to get to the, to where you need to go as a community. And so just appreciate you bring this forward, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Hanson or Watkins? No takers? So I guess I'll lend my comments or lend my support as well. This, I I agree that this is overdue and this crisis is providing an opportunity to move forward at a time when I think most councils wouldn't be making these big changes. Counselor Hughes, I also agree with your comments that this really kind of takes aim at the idea that there are possibilities to do a better job of of operating our municipality. And it's, it's kind of funny, right now in my MBA, I'm taking an organization or an organizational change course essentially. And Mayor Heron, I quoted some of the the comments that he made yesterday about kind of the the importance of of this kind of change. I I don't know of any other municipalities who are going about this kind of kind of aggressive review, but I know even locally, the the U of A's president-elect made made comments about the the massive changes that they're, they're experiencing as they have to make to kind of stay afloat in in this changing environment. And one of the comments that he, he, he made at the U of A was that everything is on the table for in this review, the challenge is enormous and we can't preclude any particular outcome. I had a conversation with Mr. Scoble about kind of that, that quote and and the U of A's push for change. And and it, 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 it's it's exciting having leadership with the city of St. Albert, who isn't stuck in a box and and isn't, doesn't have the idea that that we cannot change. So so thank you to Mr. Scoble for that. And and it's sort of related, but you know, I I've been so impressed with the staff that we, that have volunteered for redeployments over the last few months. And I think their leadership in in taking those, you know, taking on new roles, it really shows me how how much support we have of staff in terms of making sure that we're doing the best job that we can and to be open to, open to change. So so I guess I really want to thank staff who who have been supportive in, in, you know, the the times that we're dealing with. So Mayor Heron to close.
Not much to add to a lot of this. I I get some of the the angst of timelines and stress in the corporation. I believe we've got some really good people working for the city of St. Albert, and they're going to see this as as an opportunity more than anything. So I'm hoping that that message comes across from this council and Mr. Scoble that this is, this is going to be a good thing. You know, when I think about the stuff that the seven of us have accomplished in the, in the two and a half, what are we at, two and a half years, almost three that we've been elected? With Ray Given Drive was huge, you know, getting some recreation lands at least decided on, you know, we changed the land use by all these things that we have really been pushing that were coming out of door knocking during the election. One, you know, this no one ever could have predicted, but this, this operational review might become the huge, huge watershed moment for this council. And and it is an aggressive timeline and it will be all within our term. But I think it symbolizes the positive and very professional relationship this council has established amongst each other and with our administration. And that was something else we heard, door knocking, is that we wanted to have a council that was making good decisions and not and not fighting amongst each other. So I think this shows real leadership from, from this, not just from Kevin and myself, but from this whole council. So I'm hoping this gets some unanimous support to move forward. Nothing further.
Okay, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? That is unanimous. So I'll, I'll give you back the chair if you promise to give us a break, Mayor Heron.
Do you need it right now? Because we could do information requests and then we'd be done. Okay. Yeah, we'll make the motion to go on camera and then we'll meet over in teams after a few minutes.
Hearing, you have the public hearing at five.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we, well, okay, we'll do the information request, notice motion stuff. We won't make a motion to go on camera because probably won't even be time. Kevin, do you have a lot for in camera?
Probably, I would say probably half an hour, forty minutes.
Plus, we have the community mandates. Okay, we'll take a break then. We're going to do the notice motion first. Counselor Hanson?
Yeah, I have a notice of motion.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
But um, that the city of St. Albert second the town of Drayton Valley's proposed twenty twenty AM resolution and that the, that the collection of education property tax be the responsibility of the government of Alberta.
All right, thank you for that. I, is anyone else at Counselor Jolly? Go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you to Greg for writing this motion that annual combined assessment and tax notices be offered electronically commencing the twenty twenty one tax year with a cost recovery fee for mailed notices being waived in twenty twenty one and a physical mail cost recovery fee charged starting in twenty twenty two with the same exemptions as the utility bills.
All right, and I have one too. It was on, it was an IR, sorry. I just need to read it in. I'm going to find it. So on the back lanes, my information request is, was there a council motion requiring lane lighting? Does this requirement have to be met with service for this infrastructure? Or are there other options? Is motion sensing light appropriate? I see a problem with maintenance if lights were on private property, any comments? And what do other municipalities do? This is about requiring lighting in lanes. So that's the IR. And anything else? Any notice motion or IRS? I'm seeing something in the chat. Oh, oh, thank you, Ledge. All right, Counselor Hanson.
I guess just announcements, and I don't know, maybe Counselor Watkins wants to to share this about seniors, Counselor Wat- Watkins? You're on mute. Do you want to share it? Yeah.
Say that in Alberta this week, it's Alberta Seniors Week, and we're supposed to recognize the contribution that seniors have made to our society. And the seniors committee was very aware of this and wanted to make recognition of it. So I'm making recognition that Alberta has declared this first week of June, Seniors Week.
Excellent. And I think, and I should have done my research ahead of time, that normally I would also be reading out a proclamation for Pride Month, because it's in June. And so Mr. Scoble will have to figure out if out loud has requested that we raise the pride flag sometime in the month of June and somehow acknowledge that as well. So we got recs and parks, we got seniors, and we got Pride Month all at once. So, all right, anything further?
Okay, I also, I think it's also Indigenous Month too. It's Powwow Month. So June is often Aboriginal.
Aboriginal days was in my calendar for June.
Yeah.
Eighteenth or something. So you're right. Good call. And we're probably going to be doing a block party proclamation in the near coming future too. All right, it is four thirty. Why don't we take a good half hour and we'll come back for the public key. Okay, see you at five shortly before. Okay, see you at five, shortly before.
Hello all, I hope you had time to eat. Something? Right, time clock. And in my gavel, I would declare this public hearing open. Let me pull it up. So the first one is Riverside, stage 27. As of this morning, I had one registered speaker press the proponent available. All right, I'm going to turn to administration, of course, for their presentation. Hi Christina.
Hello, we're going to get Barb to give the presentation. I think this is her first presentation to council. So if you've got any questions, she'll be able to answer them.
I saw her earlier and I was wondering, who is this Barb? So, welcome Barb.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Barb. I'm here from planning and I'm going to present to you by law 102020, which is a redistricting in the Riverside neighborhood. Riverside is a neighborhood located in the Midwest portion of St. Albert. The land to be redistricted, shown on the map on the slide, is located on the north side of McKenney Avenue. The road to access this area is called Red Spur Drive. Bylaw 102020 is an amendment to the land use bylaw Schedule A, which graphically identifies each parcel of land in the city and its current land use district. So when there's a change to a district in the Schedule A, a redistricting occurs. This application proposes to redistrict approximately 5.2 hectares in the Riverside neighborhood, shown on this map on the slide. The subject lands are currently districted urban reserve, which is a holding district until development occurs on the land. Approximately 1.4 hectares will be redistricted to the residential lane district, which is shown as RXL in dark gray on the slide, and also to redistrict 3.8 hectares to the residential district, which is shown as RX in medium gray on the slide. Some permitted uses in these two districts include single detached homes, duplexes, and semi-detached homes. Amendments to the Riverside area structure plan occurred in March of 2020. These amendments were necessary for the redistricting proposal to proceed. The area proposed to be redistricted is designated low-density residential in the ASP, and both the residential and residential lane districts are considered low-density districts. So this proposal is consistent with the area structure plan that's in place. The proposed amendment was circulated on January 15th of 2020 to internal departments, external referral agencies, and property owners within 100-meter radius. On the slide, the properties highlighted in purple are within that distance and received mailed letters from the city. There was also a public notification sign placed at the intersection of McKenney Avenue and Red Spur Drive, so anybody that was passing by could be made aware of the redistricting. And we received no objections or comments from the public during that referral process. In conclusion, the proposed redistricting is supported by the area structure plan and the municipal development plan, and therefore administration recommends approval of the proposed land use bylaw Schedule A amendment as presented here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any questions of administration? Sorry, and I can't see all your-- go ahead, Council Broadhead. And I can't see all your faces because of the screen sharing, so I'll just keep going back and forth what I can see. So go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, our XL lane product, assuming there's lighting associated with-- what lighting are you stipulating to be included in this particular development?
So, through you, Mayor Heron, the lighting will be dictated through the engineering standards, and that's not necessarily something that's dictated through the land use bylaw or through planning. At this stage, I do believe there is a requirement for lighting, but I don't have those exact requirements available.
Okay, that would be interesting to note. Could you just send that out to council because it'll inform a debate later on?
Of course, we'll get that sent back.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to now-- I know that select engineering here, Blayden's here, and Shane from GenStar, do either one of you want to make a presentation or are you just here for questions? Let me make sure you're actually here. Are they here? Let's see, Blayden's there. Yeah, you're both here. So any-- you guys can unmute yourself and turn on your videos if you want.
Sorry, what was that?
You guys can unmute and turn on your videos. Do you have a presentation or are you just here to answer questions?
We're just here for questions.
Okay, all right. So, council, any questions of the proponent? I am seeing no hands rise up. Okay. Now, we do have one registered speaker, Andrew Earl. And I'm looking, I don't see him in the participants. Cheryl, is Andrew with us?
No, he hasn't come in to the meeting.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Mr. LaFleur, how long should we give him? No comments from Mr. LaFleur.
There are, there are two other, sorry, there are two other people--
Oh, really?
--have registered to, or sorry, one other people. Oh, I see, they both were, sorry, my apologies.
That's okay, yeah. Shane and Blayden were proponent and Andrew, yeah, and Mr. Crutchfield was for the other public. Okay, so I've gone to the public. I've seen no more questions from council for either the proponent or administration, need a motion.
Kathy, can I ask one quick question? Sorry.
Of course, yeah.
Sorry, trying to find the right tab to hit. I didn't, from what I could tell, this is, this is consistent with your area structure plan from before, is that correct?
Correct.
So this, this is like, we've already proved this before, this is just really just confirming what we've approved from a while ago, right?
Yes, the zoning is the same as what's in the current ASP.
Okay, that was it. I just wanted to confirm, I thought so, but might as well get that out there. Thank you.
Right. Okay, I need a member of council to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Councilor Kai, sir, I can't see everybody. Can we stop showing the screen? That would help me chair. Actually, all you, Kathy. Madam Mayor, all you have to do, I put the instructions on how you can expand your screen up on the chat, but never mind. That the public hearing on bylaw 10/2020 be closed.
All right, thank you for that. Any comments?
No, nothing to add at this time.
All right, call for the vote. That is unanimous. Councilor Mackay, since you're unmuted, do you want to do second and third?
Sure, that bylaw 10/2020 be read a second time.
Any comments?
No, all the comments were in the first hearing.
Okay. Call for the vote. That's unanimous, and third and final, please.
That bylaw 10/2020 be read a third and final time. The only comment would be is, I think this is another opportunity for us to try our RX and our RXL designation, and I look forward to that, along with lighted laneways.
Thank you for that. All right, call for the vote. And that looks like it's unanimous. Okay. That was one fast public hearing. Thanks, guys, for joining us.
Thank you.
Good luck with the building. Okay, we're moving on to the next one. Now, before we go too much further, without an official vote, I just want to look around at council, because if we're not going to support this postponement, we need to let Mr. Crutchfield know so he can participate in the public hearing. Is anyone opposed to this? Okay, why don't we ask a few questions? Council Jolly, do you have a question? Go ahead.
So, my question is about the, I guess, the cost to the city to keep delaying this. Are we paying to advertise every time? How much staff work is involved every time that we delay this?
I don't have the exact numbers on that, but we have requested that with the re-advertising, the costs and the mailouts associated with this will go, the developer will pay, will cover those costs. We haven't had incurred any costs regarding circulation because we've been able to do this through already existing venues that have been paid for by the city in City Lights at this time. But any future costs will be incurred by the developer.
So is that part of our policies? Is if they request delays, then those costs go onto them, or is this just us asking nicely, or can you--
This is unprecedented, Council Jolly.
I don't remember this ever happening before. Yeah. Any more questions? Go ahead, Council Hanson.
Yeah, that was my question too, was just around costing to the city, but also is there any any determined even timeframe that this is going to come back? Do we know that?
We don't have an exact date. We were informed that they'd be looking at coming back into the fall, but unfortunately, due to COVID, there have been some pretty significant impacts to all of our businesses within the city, and this is, this appears to be one of them as well.
Thank you, that's all I had. Okay. And I did ask this morning, if, so we've given this bylaw first reading in December. So if we do nothing for the next two years, then it just expires and it's dead. So I did ask that question, because I was a little bit confused, you know. I'm going to get somebody to make the motion to postpone, because it seems like that's where it's going to go, and then I'll have some comments during debate. Go ahead, Council Watkins, thank you.
That the public hearing on bylaw 33-2019, 33-2019, and 34-2019 will be postponed to a date to be fixed by resolution of council at a later time.
Okay, you said 33 and you meant 32, right? Just--
Right.
Yeah, 33, 32, and 34. Okay. All right, any comments, Council Watkins?
I have a bit of familiarity with this type of thing. You do have two years under the Municipal Government Act to to have your bylaw read three times, and if not, the bylaws are legally canceled. I've had one canceled. You have to start all over again at zero. So a lot of times, due to the economy or changes in the plan, or the, maybe the proponent pulls out of your deal, you don't want to rezone it, or you don't want to move ahead on that bylaw, because you may change it, so you sit on it. So that's why I made the motion, I support it. Since he's paying the cost of the advertising, as long as he's paying the cost of every time we have to re-advertise it, I don't really see a problem with it.
Any other comments? I'm just going to say a few things. I just want to remind council that this, this landowner asked for this bylaw change, I think in December, and there was a huge urgency and rush to get this done. And our staff bent over backwards to get it done by March. And, you know, and so thank you to everyone for, you know, trying to be very pro-development in our community. We have, we have a reputation of not being pro-development, and this is an example of when we, when we did. And, you know, it's unfortunate, it's been delayed twice now, and I would not be in favor of a further postponement. So if the proponent comes back and they're ready, and we set a public hearing date through resolution, then it's going ahead, at least in my opinion. I think it really has to. And that also leads, you know, we have been requested to delay public hearings very recently. And the argument, there's, there's two people that need to be heard in a public hearing. It's the proponent and the landowner who wants to do some development in the community. They get their time in front of council, but so does the public. And so for any members of the public that are waiting for this public hearing to have their opinion of this change brought forward, they deserve that too. So that's why if we get another one, I would really hesitate to delay it again, because they deserve that time. Like Mr. Crutchfield wanted to speak to it today. So he deserves that time in front of council with his opinion as well. So I'll support it today, because Council Watkins is right, these things happen, and we are unprecedented times. Let's just hope it doesn't happen again. Council Watkins to close.
Yeah. You know, I know a little bit about this, and there was a client, and they were trying to rezone it for a certain client, and that client, drop in oil prices and everything else, was very, very soft in deciding on whether they were even going to invest in Western Canada. And also, the business that was going to expand there was even deciding on whether they were going to expand. So I know there's been some problems around there. And with respect to circumventing the public's process to be able to talk, we're not doing that whatsoever, because we're not, we're not, we're not saying we're not going to have a public hearing. We're saying that we're postponing the public hearing indefinitely. If the proponent wants to go ahead, he will have to schedule a public hearing before we can give the bylaw any more readings. So we're not circumventing the public hearing process. If the applicant just sits on this and does nothing with it, then his bylaw is dead, and it goes to zero again. So then the public will have the opportunity to start right back at the beginning again. So that's why I encourage you to just support this.
All right, call for the vote. That looks like unanimous. All right, thank you. 5:17, and we've got through two public hearings. Well, okay. What's next? We got some motion to go into camera. Anyone else, anyone want to do that? It is-- Go ahead, Council Broadhead.
Recommend that committee move in camera to discuss the land matter pursuant to section 24, one, the Freedom of Information Privacy Act.
All right, before I accept that, Mr. Scoble, we have two items. We have community amenities and then our monthly dialogue with you. Do you see anything coming out of this in-camera session that would require a public motion?
I don't believe so tonight, no.
Okay. Mr. LaFleur, do you want your alleged staff to keep the Zoom meeting open, or are you okay with us shutting it down?
It's completely your call, Madam Mayor. I will say this, if you wanted to keep it open, I wouldn't keep the staff here. I'm willing to stay here, and if necessary, I would kind of clerk the last part. So it's up to you.
Oh, okay. Anyone see any public motions coming out of this conversation? Okay, all right, don't worry about it, Mr. LaFleur, we'll just go straight over to teams. Okay. All right, we'll see you guys over there. Oh, wait, no, I need to call for the vote. Is unanimous, we're now in camera. Thank you.